Welcome to the Laxford Planning Commission meeting of November 12. Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Chalmers.
Present.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Present.
Commissioner Swisher.
Present.
Commissioner Hull.
Present.
And Commissioner Campbell is absent, but you have a quorum.
Thank you. So do we have any public comments on matters not on the agenda? We have a full house tonight. Is there anyone who has anything to say regarding a matter that's not listed here on the agenda? Okay, I don't see anyone, so we'll move on.
Check the Zoom too.
Are we checking Zoom? Can you remind us if Zoom callers can talk or not, can comment or not comment? They can now.
Yes, they can. So if you're on Zoom right now and you'd like to provide a comment on something not on the agenda, please raise your hand. No hands raised.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we'll open the public portion of the meeting tonight, and we have three items on the agenda. And the first item is 64 Francis, PLN 24031. Could we please have the staff report? And just to add that this is, this is the second part of this matter, it's continued from the last meeting.
Yes, so good evening, commissioners, members of the public. The item tonight is PLN 2431 for 64 Francis Avenue. As the chair just noted, this was continued from the October 22nd hearing. As a bit of a refresher, here's the, the project site we're talking about in yellow on the left, and then a view from Francis Avenue on the right. And the project proposes to demolish the existing residence and construct a new 2,691 square foot multi-story residence with a 696 square foot attached garage. As designed, the project requires approval of design review, a floor area exception, a slope use permit, a setback variance, and a fence height exception. So as I mentioned, this was heard at your last meeting. At that meeting, the planning commission reviewed the item, took public comment, and then gave feedback to the applicant. Feedback included concern with the bulk and mass of the proposed design and its impacts to the adjacent neighbor. The commission suggested spreading the home over the lot to reduce the bulk rather than concentrating it in one area. And they were, commission also recommended a reduced fence height along Bayo Vista Avenue down from eight feet to six feet. In line with that feedback, the applicants did revise the plans. They reduced the size of some of the subgrade areas and relocated that area to the front now of the Francis Avenue frontage, which is now a fourth bedroom. They've reduced the height of the structure. They pushed the uppermost level of the structure towards Bayo Vista away from Francis and away from the neighbor. The walls nearest to the neighbor, the adjacent neighbor have been pushed, as I mentioned, towards the center of the lot. The fence was reduced to six feet above the retaining wall rather than eight feet. And the project now only requires one setback variance, which is 15 feet from Francis Avenue rather than 15 feet from both Francis and Bayo Vista. So here is just the comparison of the proposed floor plans. This is the garage. You can see where the, the space behind the garage was shrunk. And then in conjunction with the reduction of the up, the floor above this was moved over to the right here to be a fourth bedroom. There's also an elevator included in the design now. The second floor similarly, as I had mentioned, was shrunk at the rear. That space was relocated. They've also provided some articulation on this wall. Noted in blue. And then similar for the upper level floor plans. This, the walls were adjusted and moved away from the shared property line with 70 Francis and away from Francis Avenue. And then in terms of the elevations, we have what was before you at your last meeting on the left, the new elevations on the right here. And you can see with this outline, the differences proposed between the two. It's now a flat roof rather than a, than a sloped roof. And this is the rear from Bayo Vista. Again, there were some roof revisions. The roof used to slope up in two directions. Now it just slopes up towards Bayo Vista. This is the east elevation. Kind of hard to see. I apologize on the, the screen for everybody there. And you can see again how the front of the home had the height reduced, noted in blue here. And this is the view from the, the west side. This is the, the side that the neighbor who the commission was, was concerned about. This would be their view. So you can see some of the alterations noted here where they've, they've pushed this wall plane in and reduced some of the heights here. And then this is just kind of a clean elevation down on the bottom to kind of give you a better idea of exactly how it looks from that viewpoint. And as I had mentioned, the, the project was redesigned, so now it only requires one 15 foot setback, and that's from Francis Avenue. The home is now 20 feet from the Bayo Vista Avenue. And the fence, as I had mentioned, was reduced from eight feet to six feet. So now it's very, it's minorly visible here. One of the things I did want to note, I think, in the report, I did mention that it's above a retaining wall. It's above a five foot nine retaining wall, and that's something that just wasn't in the last report. So that height has not changed. They're not taking space from the fence and adding it to a retaining wall now. It just wasn't called out on the last report. And you have received, this is out of date. You've received six public comments now, five that were given to you ahead of the meeting and one that was just submitted at the meeting. Four in general opposition citing the size, opposition, excuse me, citing the size, floor area, grading, and neighborhood compatibility. In one comment citing fire safety concerns and potential revisions to the fence along Bayo Vista Avenue. On that last one, I do just want to note that the fire department has reviewed the project and did not have any access concerns. So to conclude, staff recommends that the commission hold a public hearing, consider public testimony. And if you agree that the bulk and mass of the structure have been sufficiently reduced, approve the project subject to findings, conditions of approval, and a class two sequel exemption. So that concludes my report. I know that the owner and the architect both have a presentation they want to get to. Are there any questions for me before we get to the, the owner? Or the applicant team?
Yeah, I had two questions. Can you just clarify what changed with the trees? Because the original proposal was they were going to replace 12 trees and now that's changed to, is it six, eight trees?
I think it's eight trees. There were four trees that were going to be proposed along the shared property line with 70 Francis, I think is kind of a privacy screening. But the fire department has a defensible space requirement of five feet from the edge of the structure. So those, those trees wouldn't have been feasible. They wouldn't have been allowed by the fire department. So those have been removed. And then now there is a silver sheen shrub proposed in that location.
Okay, so it's eight.
I just wanted to add about that screening hedge that's proposed. So it's proposed to be a one foot wide hedge of a plant that grows to six to eight feet wide. So it might be realistic for the applicants to keep it one foot from the fence line or the property lines that it maintains the five foot setback. It'd be impossible for us to enforce that. And then in addition, it might grow over to the neighbor's side and fill up the space that the neighbor is supposed to have as a clearance and become a nuisance for them to have to maintain it. So I just wanted to point out that there may be some issues. The fire department may not approve that screening along the property line between the proposed residence and the neighbor. Because it's, it's just going to fill up the vegetation area that isn't supposed to be vegetated.
Okay, so.
I mean, they have problems with any vegetation.
Right. So I just want to be realistic. There may not be any screening between the two properties.
Oh, I see. So does that, what does that mean then? Does that mean you can go back to trees? So it means you have nothing there?
Nothing there.
You have nothing there, okay.
Unless it's something that, that really can stay within a one foot section between the property line. I just don't, I don't think it's realistic for us to require a hedge to be one foot wide.
Got it. Okay, understood. And then the second question I had was I, I got a little confused with what, what counted in the, in the allowable square footage. What was the ADU square footage? And I was trying to figure out what exactly changed from the prior square footage or total square footage to the new one. Because it seemed like the, the house is still 2691, right, in allowable? Okay. But the garage, it looks like the, the, in terms of the overall square footage, the only change has taken place in the garage space? Is that my understanding that correctly?
So I'm sure the architect can provide a little more on this. But yeah, my understanding is that the, oh, let's see, they shared it up there. So this area here was shrunk. And then this area here was shrunk. And then I think some of the other walls with the top floor too have freed up some square footage that was then used elsewhere. So yes, the floor area calculation remains the same.
Okay, so it's, the 2691 is the same as it previously was. The garage square footage has come down from 752 to 696. So that's a reduction of 56 square feet.
Yeah.
And that's the only change in terms of totality? No?
Probably the architect.
Maybe the architect can refer, maybe you can explain in terms of square footage.
Some of it in the, the blue outline here. So this is where it used to be. This all used to be internal square footage. So it's been reduced in some areas. And then there is added square footage because they have this elevator running through the, the full breadth and some associated walkways.
So you'll, you'll be up next. If you don't mind helping me understand what, in terms of total square footage, how that changed? Because I know we have the, you know, there's an allowable that doesn't count because it's under the ground. So I was having a little bit, I, I was struggling to kind of understand all of that put together, so. Those are my two questions for now.
Any other questions or would you like to hear from the owner?
Okay, if we can have the applicant or the architect, that would be great. Thank you.
Hello.
Oh.
If you want to bring the microphone, thank you.
You might also need to turn the switch on on the top. I don't know if it's on.
Okay. I think it's on, right? Okay. Hi, everyone. It's How and Andy from 64 Francis, and we thank you for your time tonight. So how we are going to share the changes in our plans is I'll just give an overview. And then our architect will share all the changes that we've made. And then Andy will come up with some frequently asked questions that we want to share with you as well. So thank you for your time tonight to review our third set of drawings. We are continuing to listen and respond. We heard the neighbors and your feedback on how we can creatively reduce the mass and impact visually on the Francis Street side. We reviewed all the neighbors' feedback from our planning meeting, reviewing the YouTube video, kind of scary watching yourself on YouTube. The minutes, the neighbors' letters, and the many conversations we have had around the neighborhood. Our goals with our neighbors are the same, to have a loving home that works for our family that we can live in in the long run. With each set of drawings, we are investing time and a large amount of money at our expense to modify our forever home with their concerns in mind. We are excited tonight because we feel that we've gotten here. What you see on the screen today is that we held two neighborhood sessions, one on Monday and one on Saturday last week. A total of nine neighbors showed up. Only four of the neighbors that signed the neighborhood letter showed up. We are definitely disappointed that not more of them came to listen to the changes and understand the changes we have made. But I think what we're really excited about is the people that came and listened and spent time to hear us out became our supporters. Before I share the drastic, and then I'll just, next slide. So this is Monday night with some cheese. We had some wine. It's always very important on a Monday night after work. And then this is our Saturday session. So this just shows like we put, put all the drawings on the garage in terms of the three versions that we have to really show the differences that we make. Before I show the drastic changes we made, next slide. I love to show the Marin Ortho map of our neighborhood. This is our neighborhood and the close proximity that we live next to each other. As you can see, our house there in white is comparable to others in the neighborhood. And on the next slide. Oh, can you see we can go back? You want to go up? Go back? Yep, so our house is just right here. And so you can see on the map, these houses that we live in on 64 Francis Street, we live in Phil next to each other, just to demonstrate what we look like. Here are the 12 changes that we made to reduce mass and accommodate our neighbors. In order to do so, we really had to rethink our design and drastically change our floor plan. That entailed moving the bedroom floor to the first floor and the living room floor to the second floor. So what we're asking for again, I know you're, Ms. Chalmers, is that Chalmers? You were asking about the floor square footage. So we're asking above floor for the adjusted floor ratio of 2,093 square feet, same as last time. And the previous house was 22, 2115. So this is our third set of reductions. So as you have walked the property, this is our third set of story poles. So this is how we've reduced our height and mass of our structure. We've reduced the high point of the first floor by four foot, six inches. Just to give context, that's kind of like my height. I have maybe a couple more inches, but that's, that's my size. The old story pole was at 100 feet. It's now at 95 feet. We lowered the ceilings on the first floor from 14 feet to nine foot, six inches. We reduced the entrance stair height by over nine feet and nine inches. The first story pole was at 104 feet, nine inches. Current story pole is at 95 feet. We moved the fourth bedroom to the below grade ground floor. I know there was kind of conversation about how we can spread out the mass, take that media room and kind of move it to the front, which we did. We have lowered our first floor three times from 87 feet to 85 feet to 84.6 feet. For context, the house that's there now, the first floor is 91.5 feet. Our neighbor is at 87 feet. So we're actually lower than where they are at, and that's for 70 Francis. So it's, it's another reduction of six inches. We've reduced the Francis windows and the mass three times. We've modulated the mass of the front elevation, and we've removed the variance on the Bayo Vista side. The variance that we're asking for on the Francis side already exists today, so we're not asking for anything incremental than what exists today. Our neighbor accommodation to 70 Francis, we deeply care, and we continue to work with them, listen to their concerns, and make accommodations. We've reduced the height of the first floor roof to be low, to be below the windows neighbor sill. We added a large light well at the western wall to accommodate the window, window, neighbor's side window. We moved the top floor back at the southwest corner by almost three feet. We pushed back the front wall of the second floor six feet from the previous location. This is the second time the wall has been moved. I know this is a list. There's 12 changes. What Chris will do a great job on is really show visually what that impact looks like. But what we do want to show is that we've made a ton of good faith effort to fill up this PowerPoint slide. Okay, so on the next slide. There's been a lot of talk about how, and we've heard more feedback. You know, how can we maybe shift our site back even more? But if we shift our site back even more, it would reduce our ability to have any type of backyard. So this is what the site looks like today. And the ask has been, well, why can't you cite it where it is exactly today? Number one, that would require us to get another variance on the Bayo Vista side. It would reduce any option for us to have any kind of backyard. Chris will talk more about this, but we would have to get additional variances on natural state, permability, and also we would have to likely cut down more trees, which we don't want to do. We want to save the trees. So, and on the next slide. This is the backyards our neighbors have. So we are just asking for the same opportunity for our lot. Next slide, please. So what we wanted to show is I know there's a lot of talk about the character of the neighborhood. So we wanted to show some of the images on the Bayo Vista side and what the houses today look like, and especially what they look like on the hillside. We want everyone to understand that building on a hillside is hard. And we have gone to great expense to build a building that fits into the neighborhood that is pleasant to look at. We are providing four off-street parking spaces while our neighbors on both sides are only providing two parking spots because of this great expense. So these are slope lots on Bayo Vista. Next slide, please. Slope lots on Bayo Vista, they just look different from a flat site. That's just the earth. So I just want to take that in consideration. We are doing some excavation to minimize that mass and to sink the building down as much as it makes sense. We're taking our driveway from 33% to a 14% slope. Next slide. And we just want to show our neighbor, you know, they, this is what their house looks like. You know, and the mass that it looks like, and this is 60 Francis is on one of our sites. And this, they have a two parking car variance at there because of the expensive excavation of the driveway. And so what I do want to share is that many of our neighbors here with us today have asked for FAR fence height, off-street parking variances. So I just want to take it into consideration, and they have applied for it, and they've received approval from the planning department. So we just want to just take that into consideration as well. And on the next slide. I know, I want to talk about the 70 Francis transom window. I know there's been a lot of discussion around this window. To, a lot of accommodation to the secondary window. And what we've done, as Chris will share, is that we've built a light well around this. But what I do want to call out is this is not the main window. This is not the main window through the bedroom. And we saw this in their project plans that's on the public record. There are two big windows facing the primary view corridor of this guest bedroom. Currently, on the next slide over here, this is good. This window view is already being diminished by the fence, existing fence, the tree, and our existing house. Next slide, please. So I just kind of want to show like what that, the experience of that transom window, given the views of the tree, the fence, our existing house. And so, you know, where are our second bedroom now? Our second bedroom has less light than this guest bedroom. So what I, I just want you to hear us out is that we've really tried to accommodate all the pieces the best that we can and design a home that makes sense on a lot that is definitely more challenging. And so, you know, as I look at the adjusted FAR study, a lot of the slope lots on Bayo Vista do require a variance. So I really thank you so much for your time. I am going to pass it to Chris for his portion of it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Chris Parlat, the architect, and nice to be with you this evening. So I'm going to kind of do a deeper dive into more than kind of nitty gritty of what we did and how we did it and why we did it. So I'll start at the ground level here. Move this over. So in, you know, in keeping the, the overall square footage the same as it was, we, we really had to kind of take the overall house and we pushed walls and pulled walls in. And, and the start of that was taking some of the mass from above and putting it down below on, this is the ground floor here. So putting it, spreading it across the site towards the, the east side. So we, we took some of that mass, put it into this bedroom down below, which was kind of a bedroom initially up above on the next floor. So this was the first move. And this bedroom below is also almost completely subgrade with just windows at its, at its sort of left corner there to, to get the proper egress that you need. And then the bathroom has just a very tall transom glass on its, on its west, east side. So that's the first thing on the lower floor. And then next slide, please. So you go, this is the second floor up, and we actually flipped the living room. It used to be on this floor, and we flipped the bedroom and living room to have the bedrooms on this floor. So we, you know, once again, compacted everything down to get our square footage at the same level we were. We have an elevator we needed now just to really get accessibility to the upper living floor. And then you can see the, on the left-hand side, there's the neighbor's house at 70 Francis. And we, we pulled a, kind of pushed a notch into our building that's 14 foot three from, from their wall. And that notch correlates kind of directly across from there, the transom window on that bedroom that How was talking about. So that was kind of the main move on this floor. And then, and then also in the back, the master bedroom is now in the back of this. And it's also about half subgrade with just windows kind of eked in where the redwood tree is. And then at the master bath area, which would, which on the master bath would have etched glass to, to give privacy as, as necessary there. And then, okay, next one, Alex. So in the upper floor, this is kind of where we made the most changes really. And once again, just squeezing in the overall footage, you can see the, the dotted blue is the old plan. And so the front, it was really the goal was to get as much daylight as we could to the neighbor's corner. So you can see there's, it's a little hard to see, but you know, there's quite a, quite an added level of, of, you know, getting the sunlight to that corner by pushing the Francis side back and then also pushing it in from the, from the west side there to that 14 foot three dimension. And then in the back too, just articulating the rear to have kind of an inset entry. And also pushing it, we took a corner off of it just to get away from the, from the redwood tree as well. So in this, you know, we, we also have to really try hard to, to balance, you know, the neighbor's concern and then getting as much space to the redwood tree as we can, we can keep. Next, next one. And this is just kind of an oversight view, same, similar to the, the other slide previous, just showing the dotted line of the previous design. And then also the rear fence changing from eight foot down to six feet. Next, next one. And then this is the view from, from 70 Francis, just a more of a description of, you know, not only did we push walls back and in, we took the roof down at the front, which you can see. It went down about basically two foot on the west side and, and four foot six at the, the opposite side. And then notching in the wall, which is shown on the, the hatching there. Next one there. And then once again, on the front showing the, the blue dotted versus the, the current plan. Pretty significant drop in the roof height at the, we call this the large bay window at the front. The garage door height lowered to kind of reduce the scale of that main floor coming down six inches. And then also reducing the, the size of the window at the front is reduced by about half to really just keep the scale and the bulk down on that, on that elevation. Next one there. And then just a quick run through of kind of our progression. This is the, the first design we started with, which actually you can, you can see was, you know, quite, quite tall. And then the next one. So the, yeah, the second iteration we brought, you know, brought the, the, lowered the entry tower, lowered the roof at the, what was the living room. Lowered the roof at the top floor. Next one there. And then, so this is our current, current design, just to give you the progression of all three. But you can see this one shows a lot better. You can see the lower roof, the pushed wall back at the upper floor and the notching in at the, at the west side. The mass of the, the window at the front reduced. So we've, yeah, it just goes to show we've done a lot of iterations and really worked this thing over quite a bit. Okay, next one, please. And we did a, a kind of quick shadow study just to show, we obviously, some of the trees aren't in, in here, but it gives you a pretty good indication of the next door neighbor at Francis still has. the next door neighbor at Francis still has, um, barely good sunlight to that window where the bedroom is, which is that corner, that transom window kind of on the right corner there. Um, and it also has a large window to the, to the Francis side. So you can see this is a, a summer June, uh, twentieth here at ten AM, and then next one.
Could you please wait until the public comment, and then you can come up and make your comment?
Uh, I'm not sure, that's the garage here of the neighbor, and that's their seventy Francis up there. That's the proposed house.
Uh, the garage is approximate, doesn't really, doesn't really, I mean, doesn't really, uh, isn't really applicable to that. We just, it's a placeholder of approximately where it is. Um, but then the next slide, please. Uh, so their winter, um, view at ten AM, kind of December. Um, so it just goes to show that, because you know, Francis is, is pretty much due south, so you know, the sun does come around and, and gets around that corner of the building. Um, you know, pretty early in the morning, ten AM uh, is when it really gets, uh, you know, gets sunlight ten AM through the rest of the day. Um, let's see, next slide. And then just a quick view again on, you know, we, the neighbor brought up their picture last time to show the impact and um, we have, as Howe talked about, we lowered the, the front roof down to the the sill of that transom window, so their window sill now, they won't see the top of that roof. Um, and then just in yellow is showing what the current house, uh, and fence already blocks of that window uh, as it is, uh, now. Um, yeah, next slide, please. Uh, and then Howe talked about this, but just the context and how, you know, houses are fairly, we don't realize it, but they're pretty packed pretty tightly. You can see the, um, you know, see how from, from right to left, they're, uh, you know, they're pretty much up to the setbacks, um, on each property. Uh, next one, please. Um, and then just, this is an overview of our property and then the two adjacent ones, just to show how we're trying to just retain that backyard, which is, there's really not much relative to, uh, the houses on either side. So it, this shows how we, by pushing it more to the rear, really impacts the, uh, the usability of a backyard, even having um, a backyard of any usable size. Um, I think that's the last. One more. Um, this is just a, for reference, we've calculated where the neighbor's, uh, floor level is relative to ours. Uh, you know, they're about three feet, um, higher than our mid-floor on our property. So we just wanted to point that out. Um, so that's about it for slides, but I can answer questions of you guys.
So I guess I've not fully been clear, the new design is lower than the existing house now?
Yes. Yeah, the existing roof is probably four, at least four feet taller than our, our highest point, yeah.
But there's more of your house, right? The front of, at the, on the Francis side. There's more square footage, right?
It's, it's a hard, I mean, the existing house is way up the hill, so it sits higher. Real, you know, but it from, you know, overall heights were lower than that roof peak.
Okay. But I guess just, I'd like to reiterate my first question, so so my understanding is if you include all the kind of disallowed square footage, the house is three, three, eight, seven. Is that correct? And then, um, so the allowable is two, six, nine, one, so that's the same as the previous design. So, right, so what did change in terms of overall square footage? I was just trying to get a total number straight in my head. Was the garage was reduced from seven fifty-two to six ninety-six. So there was a fifty-six square foot reduction in the size of the garage.
Right, and then, well, the garage is underground, so it doesn't
That doesn't count.
Yeah, it doesn't count, and so we are just, we kept the count, countable footage the same.
They kept, but the countable, exactly, is still two, six, nine, one.
Right.
And what you've done, just so, kind of, it's a big picture, is you've taken it mostly from the, um, I'm blanking the name of the street on the top, Beo, Beo Vista, thank you, and taken it down and moved it to what is on your plans that's called the green room?
A bedroom, on, on the bottom floor, yeah.
Green, green roof is what you've called it.
There's a green roof on top, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's also another point, just to point out that that bedroom is, um, you know, almost, well, it's fifty percent subterranean, and we have a green roof on top of it to really lessen its kind of mass, uh, from Francis Street view.
And the bedroom under the green roof is, you said that does have windows or does not have windows?
No, it does, it does on the, um.
On the Francis side?
Yes, yeah, just on the corner, because the grade comes up around it. And so just on the left corner of it, um, it was on the, uh, plan there, well, yeah, right, so right here. By the time you get up to the, for the east elevation there, it's, you know, the grade is, is coming up pretty fast, and it's only about maybe the perceived building, perceived room there at that side.
Got it.
But, uh, just to follow up on that, you've said that none of that counts in the FAR of that bedroom.
There's a little piece that counts down here. On the plan, it shows kind of where the fifty perc, fifty percent, uh, cutoff line is.
Yeah, because in order to get egress out of the bedroom, you have to have the sill a certain height, which is going to make that
tall right there, yeah.
Do we have any questions? Okay.
I think the owner does have a, another portion of their presentation, if you'd like to hear it.
Oh, sh- sure.
Just a real quick, yeah, Andy will talk about some questions that were asked a lot of us.
And if anybody in the, somebody in the public had a question on the shadow study, maybe you might want to have that available for the public comment piece, if, if there's a question on that, so, all right, thank you.
Hi, Andy Green, thanks. Uh, I just wanted to answer some questions people were asking at the meeting. Um, one was, can you lower the bedroom floor another four feet? And we can't do that because there'll be no light and ventilation or egress windows on most of those bedrooms. Uh, another question was, are you going to provide defensible fire space? Yes, we are. Another big question is, why is the garage ceiling so high? Uh, the garage is fourteen feet high because we wanted to provide four off-street parking spaces. Most projects seek a, seek to choose not to provide all the required parking on a steep slope site. Um, in order to make two non-garage parking spaces usable, they need to have a minimum slope that required lowering the floor of the garage. Ceiling of the garage was set by the topography of the lot, i.e. the bedroom floor elevation was set at eighty-four point six. Any lower in the bedrooms will not have light and ventilation or egress windows. Can, why can't you shift the building back? If we shift the building back anymore, we will not have a usable backyard. The living room windows will be looking at an eight-foot retaining wall. We will need to apply for three more variants or exceptions, including rear yard, native state, and permeable surfaces. We'd possibly have to remove two, maybe three existing redwoods, and we'd also disturb the neighborhood pattern of backyard separating houses from Beo Vista. Then this current rear yard image just kind of shows that we already have a four-foot retaining wall, and if we lowered another four point five feet, it's going to be approximately eight feet visible. And then this final slide is, why can't we keep pushing it back? But my concern is, if we push back, are you going to enforce the neighbors to push back behind our window, and like, where does this pushing back up the hill go? And then the question is, is your building, why is your building so tall? The building is not tall. It is well below the height limit. The elevation adjacent to seventy Francis does not exceed twenty feet. Seventy Francis applied for a very similar, um, project, and the language down below comes from their application. Given the slope of the lot and the area of the addition, the new portion of the home would reach a maximum height of twenty feet above grade. So we're kind of right in line with what they were doing and other neighbors have been asking to do.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you to the applicant for a very comprehensive presentation there. Um, I think we can go to public comment. Yep, so if anyone who would like to make a public comment could, could come up, um, introduce themselves and limit their comment to three minutes, thank you.
My name is Carlo Cacci, I'm the owner across the street from their house. Um, they were talking about Beo Vista, that's a different street, street all the way up the hill. Those houses up there, they're gigantic, we are sitting on a hillside. So they're comparing that to the side, the street that I am in, which is the street down. So comparing these two streets is not fair. It's different elevation, that's the way I see it. Okay, last time I was here, I was talking about the house I have in Florida, Orange Avenue, but I know I'm in, that's why I put it down writing, so I'm going to read it. Okay.
Do you mind lowering the microphone just a touch, so we can hear you? Right, thank you.
Okay. So I had a conversation with the homeowner across the street. Nice couple, S six four Francis. And I, these are my concerns. When I was approved by the planning commission for my new home in two thousand eighteen, I was held strictly to allowable floor area ratio formula of city of Larkspur. Based on my property's natural slope, which is very similar to their slope. In fairness, I would want all my neighbors held to the same standard. By this rule, the allowable floor area ratio for a new home, for this project base on a slope, would be sixteen point three percent. Not thirty-eight percent. Matching the existing old house on a hillside. As proposed, they're bringing the house down into my street, more closer to it. Bringing the mass down to where my, my house is, in front of my house. So that changes things. Basically, their house will have same exact square footage of living space as mine does. My house is, is the same slope th- three, three times the size of a lot of their, their size. Right, so then, in other words, a new, a new structure that's radically overscaled for the lot. So if you're going to hell, hold me at that standard or not give me a square footage to add to my lot, to my house, I think they need to be held to the same standard.
May I ask a qualific, a clarification question, Mr. Cacci? When you, you said you lived at seventy-five Francis Avenue?
Yeah.
So you across the street from the subject property, are you on a flat lot, or is your?
It was from one street to another street, just like theirs, same slope.
Same slope.
Same slope.
Okay, thank you.
And same approximate FAR, maybe one percent different, but exactly same slope. Mine is double, double, triple lots. And so I chose to grade the front of my lot, bring my house down, not to use the hillside, not to hide any square footage into the hillside, not to build a massive three-story apartment building there. Uh, just to respect my neighbors. Wanted to make Francis Avenue looking like as it is. Didn't want to add a huge mass. And I came in front of the city council three times for that reason. Okay, the next step. The architectural massing of the proposed design then does nothing to mitigate against their new building size, for instance. The living room can leave us five feet and a half toward my, my street, right? Over the garage. And visually is just one large rectangular block. The single superscale window in that room looks squarely across the street and into my private side yard and a rear yard. This runs counter to typical hillside mass, massing as encouraged by Larkspur's Hillside Design Guidelines. Where the upper floors would set back from the street and not carry lever aggressively forward. This is the wrong design concept for our small neighborhoods area, in my opinion. In our first meeting, one of the planning commissioners said that floor area ratio of zero point twenty-six percent would be acceptable to him. And we need to look to that smaller size for this proposed design. And our commissioner said only the front porch should project out toward street within twenty feet, within the setback area, but living space should not be ex, uh, intruded, intrude onto the front setback. The applicants and architects need to listen more closely to, to these commissioners' feedback, in my opinion. Does that help me a lot last time? To the applicant's credit, lower the heights of their ceilings. And on the left side of the house, facing from Francis Avenue at the second level, they push the wall in about three feet or so, I'm not sure exactly how much they pushed it inward, give more light to the neighbors. However, the height of the fence, although none of the neighbors had any problem with that. And I thought it was very nice and considerate that they did that on this other plans. Overall, the design concept looks attractive. I don't have issues with the chosen construction and siding materials, but our problem that um, when the architect comes in here, shows us plans on the screen, I've never seen any of those plans. The ones that he showed you today, I've seen half of them, but not the other half. So I think it needs to be consistent. What there is shown in here, we need to see it also. So we can evaluate for ourselves, so there is no misunderstanding. Okay. Yeah, I don't see the ones that they had today. Seems like last minute they threw something together. To me, that's a professional, like, architectural viewpoint. And then there, I felt like they need to do a exact picture of a house what's going to be and compare it to the right side and the left side, put it all in one picture, so we all see the masses from the street level. Because all of us walk up and down the street, many of our neighbors like our street because it's not overburdened by all these huge buildings. So I would, I would feel like maybe that would be helpful. Overall, the, overall, I think we are okay, we just need to probably redesign it better. Okay, I do feel strongly about the excessive bulk of the living room massing, given its closeness to the street that I'm living on and adverse effects on my pro, privacy. Also take issues with the sense of fairness regarding differing approaches to enforcing floor area ratio from one property to another, regarding the allowable approaches to enforcing floor area ratio from one property to another regarding the allowable intensity of development based on the floor area ratio formula of city of Larkspur.
Right. Thank you very much. Yeah. Just a reminder to try and keep your comments down to three minutes.
I'm gonna have a timer on my phone for.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. And if you could introduce yourself and, okay, thank you.
My name is June Misselbus. This is my husband Ray Kates. We live at seventy nine Francis, which is across the street. And, uh, one house west of the property. Um, we've lived in our home for twenty seven years and really appreciate the, um, quietness of the neighborhood and the size of the homes that they are not really huge. Um, and I'm asking the commission here to look at a precedent that we're setting for homes in our neighborhood in Murray Park. Um, there are no three story homes on Francis, period. There are none. And there are none that reach the height that this does and that the story poles are dramatically forward for where the current footprint is on the home. And because of the story poles being dramatically forward, it creates a monolith appearance. It still looks huge, that the FAR was not dramatically reduced.
Oh, yeah.
If someone wants a backyard and they want a really big home, it does not make sense to purchase a home on a very steep slope on a very small lot and expect all of those things are going to be met. I, um, I think that it's unrealistic. Um, I'm also concerned about the removal of as much soil to accommodate this. Um, with the trucks coming and going for the safety, the potential danger to the kids and the dogs, et cetera. It's a very narrow street. Um, I park in front of my house and I've had my car swiped because of it. And, um, the idea of, I don't know how many dump trucks it takes to accommodate that level of soil, but, um, and I hear that they don't want to move the home further back. Um, but the interesting thing is the current home already is beyond that setback. And there is far less intrusion on the Beo Vista side because of the slope. So if they were to move that back, it would dramatically reduce the monolith appearance, the huge size and mass of the home. And if they want a backyard, then they bought the wrong lot because the FAR is two and a half times what the allowed is for that lot, which is, in my view, totally unacceptable. The ceiling heights need to be reduced. The similar guidelines that Carlo Caci was mentioning were imposed on the seventy nine, seventy five Francis Avenue. And, um, I think he ended up with a beautiful home that fits in with the neighborhood. So I think that I'm not against all building, but I think it needs to fit with the character, with the safety and the concerns, et cetera. I did write a letter. I'm trying to keep it briefer. Um, but the last thing is, um, I was one of the neighbors that signed the letter that seventeen other neighbors did sign. Um, and that these new plans were created before they received the letter, knowing that the letter was coming the following day. So I would just like to point that out as well. And, um,
Through the chair, that's three minutes.
Okay. I, oh, I did. Thank you very much.
Uh, I introduced myself at the last meeting. I'm Dr. Raymond Kates. Um, a little bit of my background. I've a pediatric dentist for fifty odd years. I worked for the city of Boston Mass General and, uh, uh, I came out here from my training at pediatric dentistry at Children's Hospital. I worked as a full-time professor at University of Pacific for five years and then worked as the pediatric dental attending at Mount Zion Hospital for another eight years. I was in private practice in Milvackley until I retired in seventy four. Uh, three or four years before I retired, the IJ gave me the best pediatric dentist in Marin. I say this to tell you that what is happening on that street is a disaster. You have a Y intersection with a stell coming up over the hill. You have a deep decline on black log, which comes and now two adolescent family, two family with adolescents have motorbikes coming down that hill and, uh, it's a disaster waiting to happen. We are at the bottom of the, of the hillsides on both sides. Three, four years ago, the county had to come in and replace the wall because the road behind us, Briar, was coming down in our backyard. They had to redo something that was done twenty five years ago. I can only say we survived the winter of ninety eight with all the rain. This area is the area of the rain coming down and washing things away. And if we're not aware of climate change and the eruption of huge amounts of rainfall and what it can do to those hillsides and don't pay attention to it, we'll be paying for it in the end. And lastly, most of my early career, I dealt with trauma. Most of it were bicycle trauma and facial trauma when kids got hit by cars. You are asking for trouble running those whatever vehicles coming up and down that street. I don't know if you talked to the people in the beginning of, has anybody ever been there? Has, have you seen the hills?
You mean to the neighborhood?
Yes.
To the street? Yes. I, I believe we've all gone to visit the site. Yeah.
Understand that this is
Yes.
the place where everything comes.
Right. And, and there's a lot of parts of Larkspur that are similar. Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you.
Just so you know, like, um, I time myself. Hi, I'm Todd Taber. I live at seventy Francis Avenue. Um, thanks again for, for doing this and thanks for the opportunity to talk to you guys. Um, at the last meeting, I think Chair Chalmers, you mentioned that, uh, please don't bring back the same thing and expect a different result. And to me, this is really just more of the same. Uh, it's, it's the same mass. Uh, you heard it. It's, it's pretty much the same square footage. It might've come down sixty square feet. Um, the same tall ceilings, the same size, the same heights. Um, and unfortunately, once again, I think the plans we saw, it really, they really don't represent the true story. Um, and so I, I brought visual aids again. I'm sorry. So the one thing I want to note, like, I, I think I'm, I'm really worried that, um, there's inaccuracies in these plans. And these are all based on the plans that were submitted on October thirty first is where these images come from. And the first thing is they, you know, on sheet A one point zero, they represent our house in relation to it. What you see on the pink line is there, the, the dotted outline that is our house, they continue, they pushed it forward. So, and I think that affects the light studies. The light studies that were shared aren't, aren't really accurate. Our house is pushed, uh, to a place where, where it actually doesn't exist. So if you flip to the next page, page two, um, on the left, what you're looking at is actually, that's, that's everything that they showed in the plans today, and that's in the plans that we all got to review. On the right is what, what it actually is. That's the true story. Our house sits about six feet back from that big wall. Um, you can see it's, 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 it's much taller. Um, in that, that upper floor extends, you know, just using my ruler, about six feet in front of our home. Um, so that, so if you flip the page, uh, you know, to the next page, I think all the shading, I'm on page three. Um, you know, all the shading and things make it really hard to see what exactly we're looking at. And this is just a clean elevation of the true relationship between these, these homes. Uh, and I don't think there is much of a relationship. Uh, you can see it goes incredibly tall. Um, in the lower left hand corner, you can actually see what was, what we saw on October twenty second. They look pretty similar to me. Um, I agreed with the staff report that the upper floor could be pushed back. Uh, it could come down in ceiling heights. I think last meeting, uh, Commissioner Wagstaff, you said ceiling heights could be ten, ten and ten. Currently they're fourteen, eight and fourteen. You know, that's thirty six feet. You could drop it six feet. That would make a big difference for us. Um, if you move to page four, and I'm sorry, I'm talking fast. I, I just wanted to, um,
You know, yeah, slow down. It's okay. If you need the extra minutes, yeah, that's all right.
Okay. So on page four, this, this is really when you accurately represent our house. This is, this is the true height and the difference between the eaves. Uh, there's about, you know, our house is six feet back further from what, what we saw on the screen. And the difference between the eaves, it's about ten feet. Uh, so it really is imposing. That's a lot of mass that we're looking at. Um, and I think the true story of what it looks like, uh, if you put, look at pages five, six and seven, th- these are photos. Um, you know, within this, these are, all the shading is following the story poles. So on page five here, you can see actually, uh, it's a very big imposing structure that rises ten feet and the roof grows as it moves back. I, I drew an arrow there, uh, the red arrow. That, that's noted on the plan as tree T nine that's going to be removed. And we heard a lot about trees, how unfortunately there won't be able to be a privacy screen here. Um, so this, this tree is being removed, which is natural privacy, which would be great. Um, and it would help create separation. Unfortunately, that's going to go away. And it sounds like no trees can actually be replanted there that are going to help us in the future. Um, on page five, you'll see, um, just the interior views, like this is in that room that we talked about, the transom window. This, this is the true scale if you position the house correctly. Um, that, that, that window rises massively. Like, we understand we're going to lose some light. Um, it's going to happen and we, we're not against development, but you know, this is, this is egregious in our minds. On page seven is looking to the south. Um, I'm sorry, I'm going fast again. These pages suck to flip over. But you can, you can see that, you know, what we had, we had some nice greenery, uh, and we're going to, we're going to lose all that. Like, it seems like there could be something that's beneficial for both of us. Um, and I know we also saw a lot of, uh, you know, Carlo was our neighbor, uh, who's at seventy five Francis was talking about what he's going to see here on page eight. Uh, it's just looking like, we've heard that, that this is, this is only about twenty feet high. Everyone from the other side of the street is going to see a structure that's forty feet tall. Um, when they look out their windows, you know, it, it's, it's a massive structure. The average height of, of homes across Francis is twenty four feet, six inches. Um, like June said, nothing extends over three feet, or I'm sorry, over three stories. Uh, this, this is a, a massive structure, um, like, and it, it doesn't really need to be that big. Um, and, and just, I know we were talking about like the scale of homes, uh, and even like the map. So I, I was, you know, we believe in data. And so we were looking at like, what are all these, there's, there's three double lots in the neighborhood. The rest are single lots. So this is just a table of what the average square feet are of single lots. So you can see like single lots in this neighborhood on Francis Avenue, which is what this address is. The average is seventy four, seventy six square feet. You know, and the average total square foot, including everything, everything below grade, everything is one thousand nine hundred and seventy. You know, this is going to exceed that by fourteen hundred square feet. That's seventy percent larger. And the lot is twenty seven percent smaller. Like those, those numbers make no sense. And just to see how it is, you know, I'm a very visual person. If you can't tell, on the next page is actually just, just a map to show the relationship between these homes. You know, you can see where the, the size of lots are in the square footage. This helped me to realize that like a, a home this big just cannot, cannot be here. Uh, and then on the last page, I just, you know, I know long time I'll skip it. There is, we do have a heritage oak on the back of our property that will be impacted by the grading. Um, it's, the critical root zone extends into the footprint of this and we'd love it to be protected. Um, unfortunately, it's going to, it's not going to be. So, so just, I'll, I'll be quick here. Um, you know, I, I think we all have the same concerns about the size and the out of scale precedent that this really will set for our neighborhood. Um, the commission's role, at least how I believe it should work or what I'm told, is to really enforce code and strictly interpret it for the benefit of the whole neighborhood, not just one home. Um, this is a complete tear down, like it's starting from scratch. So I think, you know, I believe you as a commission have the opportunity to look at it from scratch too. You know, this is, this is not, there's no precedent of, of, of how this existed. The current, the current home's FAR, it only got there, um, to what it is today with modest exceptions over the years. You know, it would, like this, what we're looking at right here is completely different. It's substantially more square footage, you know, the, the point three, whatever FAR the current home has is a ton less square foot. This design is totally new, therefore it has every opportunity to comply with the code, the neighborhood norms. It really should not get the benefit of the exceptions granted, uh, for a home, uh, that's completely different. Like this is, this is brand new. It's a clean slate. So, so let's do that. Um, I mean, as residents of Larkspur, we all knew what we signed up for when we bought homes, like the code is not a secret. It's not a mystery. Um, if, if this were a reasonably sized home, it really wouldn't need these exceptions. You know, it could have a backyard if it had less square footage. It could have everything else the applicant's desire. It just needs to be appropriately sized and within the norms. Um, so, you know, I just want to say thank you again. Um, we really hope that we aren't setting new precedents with this. And, you know, please, you know, if you have any questions about these actual pictures I flew through, please let me know.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
You know, I actually do have a question. I'm going to give it, I'm probably going to ask Alex. I'm, I'm going to start with Alex. Um, in these plans here, it says that the roof is forty feet.
But.
So that, that elevation is like a two D rendering of it. If you measured from the very like bottom to the very top, yes, forty feet, but the way that we measure height also includes the other axis. So it's not forty feet.
Okay.
At, at one point. Yeah.
Can I clarify that though?
And, and that's not the way it's measured. Um, that, that house is way below height limits, just
Yes.
in reality.
Correct. It, it, it's, it's, I, I absolutely agree. It, like the, I know, I'm familiar with a total height is thirty feet. If, if I'm across the street and I'm looking at this in totality, you're going to see a forty feet structure, a forty foot structure. And that, yes, yes, the heights can comply with the code, but you have to, we're looking at this in totality, you know, so.
Okay. So the point you're trying to make is this is what people see from this, the street as opposed to what the way.
Yeah. Sorry. And I, I know you were going to say something, sir, like
Yeah, yeah.
It's written to say thirty, the code, as I interpret, you can build up to thirty feet. Uh, and that's with, that's relative to everything, right? It's the same way I, I shared some pictures that show the true relationship of our house because it's relative after all the shading.
All right. I understand, but the reality is you'd have to get on the ladder to see it as a forty foot house. It just doesn't work that way. You're standing at the street?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. If, you know, you'll, thank you. All right. Yes, I know. Yes, thank you.
Um, thank you for the opportunity to provide comments. I'm Katie Johansson Taber. Um, I live with my husband Todd, who just, uh, spoke at seventy Francis next door to sixty four Francis. Um, at the last planning commission meeting, we heard from How and Andy that they were frustrated at receiving conflicting neighborhood feedback, and we therefore worked together with neighbors to align on feedback that was data driven by square footage, FAR and height averages in the neighborhood. Seventeen neighbors signed on to that letter and it was shared with How and Andy. But we were surprised and disappointed to hear that they had resubmitted plans before they ever saw that neighborhood feedback and before they shared revisions with the neighbors. I might suggest that that's why people didn't come to their, their meetings. They felt like there was no point since plans had already been resubmitted. We do appreciate that they have made minor adjustments to the plans, but they don't go far enough to reduce the height and the mass. Um, for example, uh, despite the commission's suggestion to reduce ceiling heights to ten feet, the ceiling height in the garage is still fourteen feet and on the third story, it vaults to almost fifteen feet. The second story does not employ a stepped back design and still cantilevers over the garage. And as the staff report noted, the third story could be pushed farther back on the lot, similar to the existing structure's footprint and reducing our, it, its impact on our home. It's also puzzling that below grade square footage was removed and placed above grade. This does not reduce mass. Instead it increases it. We disagree with staff's assessment that the proposed design is compatible with the scale of homes in the neighborhood. On the contrary, there are no three story homes on Francis Avenue. Uh, as we were speaking about when viewed from across the street, the structure rises to forty feet tall, where the average height in the neighborhood is just over twenty four feet. The average total square footage of homes on the forty to eighty block of Francis is twenty two hundred, far lower than the more than thirty three hundred square feet being proposed here. The average FAR on the forty to eighty block is point two six. And as the staff report noted, including total square footage, the proposed residence would have the largest FAR of all residences within three hundred feet of the property. We are also concerned about errors in the plans that lead us to question their overall accuracy. As my husband pointed out, the position, the positioning of our home is incorrect on the planned sections, giving the misleading impression that the proposed structure is not as tall as it actually is relative to our home. And the plans also continue to depict an addition that does not exist. Uh, staff noted that the square footage of the existing structure was not correct in the application, resulting in an incorrect FAR calculation. And we are just learning tonight that light studies were done. Those have not been shared with us. We have not had the opportunity to review them. And I wonder if you all have had the opportunity to review them. The design is simply too big for the small lot. Approval of it would set an alarming new precedent. It would be telling us all that we could add third stories to our homes, that we could more than double our allowed FAR, that we can dig five hundred cubic feet out of our land, that we could essentially ignore code and build excessively large homes on our small lots. The applicants have, uh, made, made statements that they can't make these changes. They can't. The applicants have made, made statements that they can't make these changes. They can't reduce height. They can't push it back. The, the reality is that these cans are self-imposed. They are only cans because the number of square feet they're trying to fit onto this lot. If the home were an appropriately sized home, they would not have all of these restrictions.
Thank you. We're getting, we're at the three minute point.
I'm almost, I'm almost, I'm almost finished. Thank you. The commission's responsibility is to reasonably interpret code, to maintain and protect and protect the character of neighborhoods, not to look for ways to bend it for the benefit of one property. We recommend that this application be denied and that the applicants be instructed to come back with plans that have meaningfully reduced height, mass, square footage and FAR to be consistent with neighborhood averages. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are we done? Okay. One more. Okay. Okay.
I also live on Francis Avenue. I live at 17 Francis. I was out of town on the 22nd when you had your last hearing, although I did send a letter in from out of town about this. When I arrived from out of town and saw the story polls, I was absolutely floored. While they have been reduced a little bit, it is still astounding that this planning commission would consider any structure on that lot of that size. The only house that has slightly larger square footage is at 75 Francis, which is a double lot and a much more massive, much more massive lot. And it's only a two story house. This house that is proposed, they may have made some small adjustments to it, but it is still, I'm sorry, way, way too tall, way too close to Francis Avenue. Bio Vista, it doesn't matter. When you're walking up along Bio Vista, it is so much higher than Francis Avenue. You're not going to notice this house particularly, even right now. I think the roof line of the existing house, which is further back, closer to Bio Vista than Francis by a long shot, is still maybe only six feet above the level of the street. So Bio Vista doesn't matter, but Francis Avenue, you get it that close to Francis Avenue, you need to enforce those setbacks and you need to get the height down to a two story house. That's all I'm going to say, but this house is ridiculous.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thanks for taking some time. My name's Dan Orsini. I live at 51 Francis, which is right down the street. We live in the flats. I'm here to oppose the current proposal for the following reasons. Precedent that was set to Carlo's house, 75, directly across the street. When he proposed his build, there were things wrong with his property that were already out of code. The planning commission took steps to make sure those codes came back. They took his garage away, incorporated the garage into his property. He met the FAR requirements to 18. This house is on the smallest lot. I believe in the planning commission. I believe in the codes. I do not want to live in a community that it's fully open to the community to decide what my house is. If I wanted that, I would have moved to Woodlands. I live in this community for certain reasons. As the architect said, we're squeezing the square footage into this lot. This is the largest square footage on the second smallest lot. If you look at the lots that were provided by Todd, if we set a precedent here, what you are saying is you can build up to 3,800 square feet, however you see fit. Dig down, go up, do whatever you want. That precedent, in my opinion, is wrong. I have confidence in the board. I have confidence in the rules that were set. If you choose to approve, I say put a halt on this proposal. Rewrite the code. So any builder that comes in, so our new neighbors that come in are not pitted against each other. We all understand what the code is. Some of us made decisions not to buy property on our street when it came available because we knew the code and we wanted to live up to that. So having the opportunity to buy and cram in, to use Chris's word, squeeze in the square footage is just not realistic. The house should not be built to size. We all know what we're going to buy. There are rules in place for that. Andy even said in his presentation tonight, when does the pushback stop? Why does an owner have to come in and have constant pushback? Who's going to go further? Who's going to go higher? You set this precedent, I can guarantee you, you will see many more plans. And I would be in favor of Carlo digging into the back where the commission said, you're not allowed to do it. Cutting down more trees where the commission said, don't do it. This is 2018. I know it's a new board. You may have different opinions, but the code hasn't changed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. I do appreciate your service. My name is Kirk Berkstrom. You might remember me from the last meeting, which seems so soon. I live at 65 Francis, which is across the street. The neighbors have really tried to work with the applicants. By the way, I attended one of the open houses and contrary to what Howe said, it did not change my mind. I thought the changes were very incremental and I think most neighbors, as you've heard, agree with that. I think it's important to know how unified the neighbors are, particularly on this block. So 17 neighbors signed that letter. Every household on the immediate block signed the letter, except for Carlo, and you heard his concerns tonight. So there is 100% unanimous opposition to this design. That should be worth something. Every single household on the street opposes this design. And I want you to hear that. There are ways to make this fit the scale and character of the neighborhood. There have been suggestions by the commissioners and there have been suggestions by the neighbors. I think the concern you've heard about precedent is very valid. You know, we don't want to see our neighborhood go down, go down the toilet because all of these codes are broken. And I think the applicant can get a beautiful house if they work within the constraints that are there in the code and if they respect the, the scale and character of the neighborhood. I remember distinctly the first time I drove up the street when I was coming to an open house to see the, the home that we bought. And I loved the fact that there were still one story homes and the, the two story homes fit together with the diversity of architecture that had appropriate setbacks from the street. And I fell in love with the neighborhood and my guess is that Howe and Andy fell in love with the neighborhood for the same reason. And I understand the human impulse to build as big as you can. You want to get that return on investment. You want to have the high ceilings. You want to have the spectacular home. But that should not come at the expense of the neighbors and the neighborhood. I ask you, respect the neighbor's concerns, respect precedent, respect the code. Don't deny this application until there are more significant changes. And what you will find is when those changes occur, the neighbors will be very happy to support this project because we want them to have a beautiful home. And, and Carlo was right. When he did follow the guidelines that were issued by the previous planning commission and listened to the neighbors, the final planning commission meeting, not a single neighbor showed up because we knew that the house would fit into the neighborhood. The only reason there are so many of us here and 17 people signed that letter is we do not feel it fits. So I ask you to request more significant changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you confirm what address you were at?
65 Francis, directly across the street at a slight angle. And I might add that, that high bay window looks into our front courtyard, so takes that privacy away. It's visible from our second floor. So this notion that, you know, you don't see anything, you do.
And you're also on a slope then as well?
Yes.
And yes, you are.
Yeah. And we did not excavate that slope and we worked within the code and we have a, you know, a recently sized, you know, roof height. So everyone in the neighborhood has really done their job to respect the code and respect the character of the neighborhood. And we're just asking for the same.
No, thank you. What is the number of the house on the other side of 64?
Oh, I'm so glad you mentioned that. That is, I believe, 60.
Have it on here.
And I'm going to stop the clock, clock and start it again because I have a letter from that neighbor whose name is Bob Mitchell. And Bob could not be here tonight, but he asked that I read this letter.
So this is immediately to the west, east, east.
Todd and Katie are immediately to the west. Bob Mitchell is immediately to the east.
Right. And this is 60 Francis. And I'm just looking them up on Google Maps. I can just get a.
Yeah. So, so Bob was one of the people that signed that letter. He was one of the 17 immediate neighbors. And Howe reached out to him, I'm glad you did, to seek his, his feedback. This is a letter he wrote on November 10th to Howe. "I am concerned with the often destructive effects of new construction and remodeling of homes, which is not consistent with the small scale residential character of the community. In my opinion, both future construction and remodeling should be consistent with surrounding residences and show consideration for the neighborhood aesthetic. Existing ordinances and codes are often hammered out by planning commissioners and city council members, making a delicate balance of interests. I believe that those ordinances, ordinances and codes should be strictly enforced. Else why have them if anyone can come into any neighborhood and ask for waivers, exceptions and variances? The pre-existing residents have a right to expectations as expressed in the zoning and design ordinances. The city of Larkspur in effect made a pact with the residents when they adopted the planning code, that they would protect the neighborhoods according to the code requirements." I think that's a very eloquent statement of your responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So they got 035. And there were another 0.1. We have a list of FARs here. That's what we're going through. We're just looking to see what, what would, yeah. Next comment, any other comments? Right. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Chu and I live on 20 Briar, up the road a little bit. I just want to say that I'm excited about a new family joining the neighborhood, especially with younger children. I have three young children as well. I'm excited to see new construction, new, new homes, new ideas, innovative designs. I think it'll make the neighborhood look beautiful. There's many beautiful homes around. There's some large homes on Francis already. I understand the concern that this might look huge, gigantic. I don't know if it will. It, it's on a hill, so maybe that's a little deceiving. I, I just want to say that I'm, I applaud the architect and the applicants to try to accommodate the neighborhoods, neighbors' concerns and make adjustments as best as they could. And yeah, I just wanted to show support for new families joining and maybe perhaps there is a time for change. There is a time for making changes to the ordinances or the variances for as a new board. You're not the 2018 board. You may have new ideas of how to enhance the neighborhood. And perhaps this is one way to bring in diversity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Do you want to go to Zoom?
Yeah, let's wait to see if other comments on Zoom.
Okay, we do have one hand up. Okay, Christie Chandler has their hand up. They should be able to speak as soon as they unmute.
Hi. My name's Christie Chandler. I live at 55 Francis and I'm writing to, I mean, I am calling in to also voice my concerns. I signed the letter that was also submitted among the 17. I do think that the, the size and scope is, is quite egregious for the lot. And I think that once these exceptions are made, it really does set a precedent that will then, as we have all said, lead to what will really be the beginning of the end of this neighborhood as it is. And I think, I just want to comment on the, the commendations for the changing of the plans, I think are really misdirected because when you initially make a plan that's so out of scale and so out of scope, to make changes is not really something that we need to be commending at this point. When that was the, you know, the, it was so out of scale to begin with. I think what we need to do is look at it as it is and realize that it's still not the house for this lot. This is, could be a beautiful house somewhere and it could have a yard, but it's just not the house for this lot in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on Zoom?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay. If you'd like to respond, you can, but please, and we are going to enforce this strictly. We're going to just limit you to three minutes. And when your three minutes is out, because you, we've had an opportunity to hear from the applicant.
Yeah. I just, I just want to respond because I really thank the neighbors for all their feedback. I think the first thing is that, you know, the house that we're asking for again is 2093 above ground. What we heard from the planning commission last time is that, you know, that floor error ratio made sense. There was, I, we didn't hear that there was going to need to be a reduction. It was really around spreading the mass. I do also want to share, you know, what I heard was around setting a precedent and all these variances. Dan Orsene at 51 Francis has an FAR of 0.52.
Okay.
But it's, but it's.
I appreciate.
All right. Thank you. But yes.
60, 60 Francis. It is truthful. It is.
Got it.
This is an adjusted.
This is an opportunity for the applicant to talk. Yeah.
60 Francis, our neighbor Bob, I've reached out to him many times. His FAR is 0.35. And so for the 17 people that signed the letter, only four people came. And so I'm, we've reviewed the letter. It's not really different from what they shared at the meeting. We've reviewed it and we've adjusted the mass based on the feedback. We talked about the front some yard variance. We're 28 feet from the curb. It brings our property in line with Bob's property, which is what the architect also showed. And so we talk about this tear down and, you know, being, being able to be more creative. We're still trying to protect the beautiful redwood tree. That's what we're trying to do. And we're talking about mass, you know, it's a two story house. So a two story house next to a one story house is going to look different. That's just a fact. And so I think there's a lot of misinformation about the height that's getting the neighborhood very excited. Like Commissioner Wax have said, on a hill, it's not 40 feet, it's 20 feet. We're way below the height limit. Below also for where the house exists. You know, I think there's also conversation about a bigger lot. The, you heard on Francis Street, the lots are the way they are. And so we are replacing an above ground house, 2,093 versus what was there, which is 2,115. The garage is underground that we're digging at our expense. So I just want to make sure that, you know, you guys hear us on this, but it's a two story house. It's going to look different next to a first floor house. There's many neighbors in this room today that has asked for variances to their FAR, fence heights and parking spaces. So our neighbor at 70 Francis got their planning addition approval and they have a 0.31 FAR. So that is approved by the plantings and they talked about our ceilings. The ceilings in that. addition is thirteen feet. I really, I really appreciate your time, but I just want to hear, I hope you can hear both sides of the stories. There are variances all over the board on Francis. What we heard from you last time was really not about the floor area ratio.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're going to close the public portion of the meeting.
I think that opens it up for rebuttal to the response. So, did you allow the response? Did you not?
Well, only because they opened it. And what are we going to do? Are we going to allow the responses?
I, I think I've heard enough.
Yeah, okay.
I think we've just been clear that that addition that they keep referring to does not exist, but it is approved. It is approved. And their architect had the same.
Wait, wait, which addition? The one next door, the one's house.
Through the chair, if you might. The neighbors at seventy Francis had an addition approved at the front. The addition was not constructed and the planning approval has lapsed. It's shown on the plans for context, and I believe that the neighbors are opposed to that because it's not approved.
Got it.
So, yes.
Yeah, okay. I, I think I understand that now. You didn't, you did not build the addition that was approved by the.
Sure, I'd love to just add a little context real quick, just to sense it.
And this is going to be the very last comment. As, as the public, this, if there's any more comments, this is the person who's going to make the last comment. Okay?
Okay, I'll represent. So, so just to add context to that, that addition, we did in twenty-eighteen apply for a, to do a small addition. We applied to add a modest four-hundred-and-nineteen square foot feet, square feet to our house, which is ten-eighty-eight square feet. Our garage is something, basically it would take our house from a total square footage, and these are on the tables I gave you on that chart. With garage, everything below ground, above ground is about thirteen-twenty-eight square feet. We applied for this to build it up just a little bit, bring it to seventeen-hundred square feet. That's within the neighborhood norms. In fact, the planning commission said this is a modest upgrade. What we're talking about is something that's three-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-seven square feet. Like on a lot that is smaller than our house. It is the second smallest lot. Like, I think what you're looking at is, it's, it's not just F A R, it's mass plus height plus F A R plus square footage. It's a whole equation. Like, that's what you need to do to make the finding. And, and every single one of these, you know, this thing goes well above it. It's just not, it's completely out of scale. It would set precedents that are out of scale. Again, aesthetically, the design-wise, I think it'll be beautiful. But it just needs to be smaller within the neighborhood. So there, you know, the neighborhood doesn't have to give so many accommodations. So thank you. But there's the context. The addition does not exist.
Right, thank you. And I do want to point out that we bent the rules of tonight, you know, we didn't, we didn't hold you strictly to the timing that we're supposed to hold. We've held other commentators to in, in previous meetings because we can see that this is really important to all of you here tonight. So we do want to give you an opportunity to speak, to express what you want to say. And we did allow the applicant to go over what their allowable amount is as well. So we really do, you know, we're all volunteers. We're trying to allow you, this is coming out of our time too, but we want everyone to express their opinion. So I just wanted to point that out, that we did bend some rules tonight. Okay, just bring it back to the commission.
Can we, sorry, can we, I don't know if the seventy people, do you have extras of these? Or you just have enough for us?
Who, who do you want to ask the questions from?
The architect? Because I, okay, because I'm trying to understand the, the discrepancy that they're citing for where their house is located and the view block of the windows. No, I want the architect to speak, sorry. Because you've already explained, I, I've heard your side. I want to hear, I want them to understand, explain. Right, and, but I want to understand why it is. I'm trying to understand, so. So I don't understand why it doesn't look like that in. Yeah, because they show that they're at the, at the window sill. Because that's why I was asking, you know, if. Yeah. Which is a question. Yeah. Yes.
Out of the, the plan set? Are you humorous?
Looks like, and that, I need to go check this, but that basically matches their. I'm looking at. This, this is correct. The light study, the house is in the correct place.
And in the sections.
The light study matches that plan right there.
And.
The rear wall, we did have that wrong. And what we're drawing is rear wall doesn't matter. That's not anything. So front corners, it doesn't matter. It has to be. Correct there. This, was this.
It's a discussion now between the people in the audience. We have one specific question.
Well, and we have one specific question from the commissioner. If we could answer the commissioner's question.
Different slide, and it was the slide where I stopped, I asked you if that was, you know, the house, it had like the yellow of where the current house was. So if you could find that slide.
Are you trying to figure out if this is an accurate representation?
Yeah, because that's saying.
Maybe I can ask the question. We were presented this by a neighbor and this is not indicated in what you presented to us. So we're trying to figure out, is this accurate?
Sort of looking basically straight back.
Right. So maybe we could present this to you and you can tell us, is this, once the house is built, is this an accurate representation? Like if we come, come and visit you, once, once the house is built and we go and look out the window, is that what the neighbor's going to see? And you, can you, could you, could you approach? And, well, Alex, could you maybe?
Not, not one wall.
Right. It's a.
They're not showing.
So there's a line through here.
Yeah, they're, they're not showing that. They're also looking. Yeah, they're, they're just not showing the step back on that.
Okay. But the, the idea that.
But the height will be here, but then this lower part, and there's also a step back of the code.
So the bump out that you, you've put into this new design is here?
Yeah, this notch part is not really shown.
So what he's saying is the.
This, this step back is not shown.
So the step back's not shown, but the height is accurate. Height is accurate.
And so.
Just verify, just follow the story pole lines right here. He just made it a monolithic, no, without.
Yeah, without the step back, yeah, yeah. But the, but the height is accurate, is what you're saying. But yes, it is accurate. And is it that close? Like the house next door to their house, it's not that?
Well, that, yeah.
Okay.
That's just showing that.
Right, got it. Does that answer your question? Kind of.
Because as we showed, you know, that piece step back, stepped back before.
Well, and when you compare, so when you compare this photo, which is the current rate, to here. And I have looked at the story poles and I'm like, well, this seems pretty accurate for what.
Story pole line is there, yes. It's not really showing.
Because the bump, the bump in has, is not reflected in the story.
Yeah. So the story pole, story pole, yeah, that's.
Right.
So, I mean, it's definitely impacted there, the window. We don't deny that, but it's, I don't think it's to that degree. It's hard to get a sense.
Okay.
And it's fourteen feet away from the property. So our property is actually conforming. Their property is at five feet from the property line, which is nine conforming, should be six feet for a total square foot away, fourteen.
Right, we can't move their house, though.
Or accommodate the one trans window on the side and building a light wall.
Okay.
Which is not their primary window. The primary window is the.
Right, okay, thank you.
I mean, I think I've gotten as good of an answer and explanation as I'm going to get.
Yeah. Do you have any more questions? You have few questions, you said?
Not really. I don't think I have any more questions.
Does anyone else have questions? Okay. Based on the answer of your question, do you want to go ahead and provide your comments? But, so we can discuss.
I, I'll be, I'll be blunt. I, I still think it's too big for the lot. I mean, the lot, I think, you know, I also had looked at, you know, the other lots in the street. I think that what the neighbors did with that, that, you know, kind of plot map showing, you know, the size of the lots, it just, to me, it just, it's just seems too big for such a tiny lot. I just, I, I, I just can't. It's just, it's just too big, in my opinion. And I know it's going to be underground. It's going to be, you know, I guess a cave in some ways, in some places. I mean, to me, it's a little bit towards, you know, kind of a little bit of a San Francisco-ization of the lot. I mean, it's like, you know, when I, when I think of lots in San Francisco, you know, they're so close to each other. And then, you know, you go down Nineteenth Avenue and they're right next to each other. And I don't know, this just seems like, you know, I think the discussion about a precedent, it just, it just seems too big to me. And I mean, the, I think the existing house is already pushing the limits of what, I, I wouldn't have approved the existing house. I guess would be my point. I think that, you know, in theory, it's too big. It's been grandfathered in. I just think this is, and I, I honestly, I don't like the design, so it's not, but that's, that's a personal preference. I wouldn't live in that house. So I'm not, I'm not inclined to endorse the design. The variance, we've done a lot of variances for setbacks. That doesn't bother me as much. We've done, you know, plenty of cubic yard removal. That doesn't bother me. The floor area ratio isn't, you know, weirdly, the way it's calculated isn't that much different, but, you know, I still think it's just too much.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to go next?
Okay, I'll go next. I think there are a lot of things that could make the house better. I think pulling back the bedroom floor from Francis in some way, so it's not quite so dramatically overhanging would help. I don't have a problem with the setback variance. I, I think what they've done is, what you've done is fine relative to that. And I think in reality, the house won't be seen in the, the way that a lot of the photographs are being shown. But I think the house probably is too big for the site. And and I also think that, and I don't know how the neighbors feel about this, but the, the redwood tree is sort of the tail wagging the dog, it seems like to me. And I would not be opposed to having the redwood tree be removed. I think it opens up a whole lot of other possibilities design-wise. And from my own perspective, redwood trees are a hassle to have next to your house. So we dug roots out for years from under our foundation, from our neighbor's redwood tree. So anyway, I, I think I, I cannot support it as it is. That's, that's my thoughts.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wax, though. No, you're not Wax, so I'm sure.
So I think this is a classic example of two adages. One is wisdom of the crowd and the other is read the room. I think that when seventeen neighbors on your street are opposing your design, you got to listen to them. I think it, it's a nice house. I mean, architecturally, I think you've done a really nice job. And I really do appreciate the modifications to it to try to accommodate that. But as the other two commissioners said, it's just too big for the lot. It's way too big. And I think you could build a beautiful house with a similar design aesthetic on a much lower scale and fits the character of the neighborhood. So I'm, I can't support this.
Thank you. I actually really struggled with this one because I do like the design a lot. I think it's a beautiful house. I think if it was just the twenty-six ninety-one, it would be, I mean, that's a family home. And we, because of the nature of, of steep slopes, we have as a commission granted a lot of F A R exceptions. We have, and, and you've seen that. I mean, you've referred to a lot of other homes that have come in for variances and exceptions. So we actually have done that. And somebody made a point about maybe changing the code, and maybe we actually need to look at that and update the code to reflect what we're actually seeing in our neighborhood. And we, we do really appreciate them new designs that come in. But I have to actually agree with my fellow commissioner about, I've not seen such a strong response from the neighbors. And it's very consistent. And it's, when we've seen this before at a lower scale, we've seen a response in the plans that have worked with the neighbors and we've come to a good conclusion. Unfortunately, we're not seeing that here. So I'm, I'm, I mean, I, when I looked at the story polls, I felt I could live with that if I had to live opposite that. You know what? It's not as bad as I could, but I'm doing what Jeff has just advised, which is read the room. So what's going to work best here? I mean, we can send you away, you could do a redesign and come back again. Or we could just make a denial and you could appeal it. Yeah.
I think more consistent feedback would be great because like at the last meeting, which we watched the YouTube a few times, it wasn't really about the floor error ratio. We suggested two things. Is there an issue with replacing the existing house today, twenty-ninety-three versus twenty-one fifteen? What I heard was, that seems reasonable. And so we said, should we remove underground space? What I heard was, no, that won't really impact anything because it's underground. So what we've done is we've come back with the same, that's why we've come back with the same floor error ratio. And we've spent tens of thousands of dollars redesigning. So I think when I'm, you know, I appreciate the neighborhood's feedback, but I, I, you know.
And I, I hear you. You, maybe as a commission, we were not consistent in giving you clear and direct feedback last time. And we can, you know, maybe that's true. However, we are four individual, five individuals with all slightly differing opinions. I think you've heard more than once that maybe one of, one, one, and I, as much that I hate to say this, maybe removing the tree might give you the, which I know you don't want to do. I know one of you said that before.
If we do that, then we would probably come, I mean, the floor area ratio, is that still a problem if we remove the tree and was able to spread out the mass?
Can I answer? I think, I think, you know, the one thing that's nice is having the luxury of time to actually go and look at the site, look at the building, look at the design, look at the, and believe it or not, we do spend a lot of time doing this. I mean, a lot. And I've thought about this a lot. And one of the luxuries of my job is every now and then I have downtime in the operating room and I can look at the things. I can bring it in and look at it. And I did. And I think the thing that struck me about it is that it's really too big for the lot. It's, if you downscaled this by, let's say, a third, it would be more proportional to the lot. And I, one of the commissioners said it is kind of like a San Francisco house. They have very different F A R rules in San Francisco than we do here. And our slope use one, I, I had to deal with this when we designed our house. I mean, we had a significant redesign and, you know, it was frustrating, but at the same time, at the, in the end, we got a much better design out of it because of that. And I think that you might have to have a very radical revision in your mind of what you want to accomplish here. But I think you're going to get something that's really nice, but it's got to fit the character of the neighborhood. It's got to fit, you know, make your neighbors happy. I, I don't love, you know, design by committee. I don't think that's, and people should be able to build what they want to build, but they have to build it within reason. And the fact that you have such vociferous opposition to it to me means that it's not within reason. It's, 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 I don't want to say it's unreasonable, but it's not going to be, it's going to make you not a very happy neighbor on the street. Ultimately, if you decided that you're going to do this exactly as it, and it was approved today, I think you're going to actually come up with a much better design that fits better with the neighborhood. So that's, that's my thought. So the point is that we've had a lot of time to think about it in the intervening two to three weeks or four weeks. And that's sort of why there may have been a shift from then to now is thinking about it just more and, and going out there and spending some time in front of the house.
Right. And then to say, we may not have been consistent as a commission, because I also went back and had a look, listened to the, to the YouTube video. So you, we're giving you. So you, you, we're giving you a choice here. You can unfortunately, spend more money.
I would just like to say that if you're, if you're asking them to change the design, I would recommend acting on this project because you're not asking them just to tweak this design more. And if they're coming in with a new design, which is what you want, we'll have to review it all again and have everyone else reviewed in all the departments, revise the notice. It'll be a different project. So my recommendation would be act on this because we want them to come in with a different design.
And what do you mean act on it? You mean deny it?
Or take some action on it? Because otherwise you're just continuing. Unless you want a modification.
Right. Okay. That's what you mean. I was, I was trying to read between the lines there. Okay.
That would just be staff's recommendation because if you wanted, if you want a different design, then continuing it isn't necessarily going to get you there.
Okay. I've heard staff's recommendations, so you would like to do that? Okay, so I was going to say, this is my first. This is very rare. I mean, we do not, we rarely do this. So I'm learning. So, so go ahead.
I, I move to deny project number two-four dash zero-three-one. It's sixty-four Francis Avenue, APN zero-two-zero dash zero-six-one dash one-one.
Can we have a second, please?
Okay, I'll second.
A roll call?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
So the motion's carried unanimously.
And should we say this?
There is a ten day appeal period where you could appeal by filing the appeal fee and turning in the appeal form to the city clerk within ten calendar days.
Thank you. I agree. I agree. Yeah.
We're not designing.
Yeah. We're not experts.
Right. That's the whole point.
No, at the end of the last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I'm done. Because I gave by three minutes.
It's not Congress.
We were coming back to the last one, right?
Sometimes you got to do what you got to do. No, I don't have a problem.
Okay. Thank you for the patience of everyone in the room. We're moving on to our next project, which is twenty-five Ward Street, also known as Farmhouse Local. And could we please have Onat's PLN twenty-four oh four zero? Could we please have the staff report?
Yes. Good evening again, commissioners. The item before you, as you just heard, was PLN twenty-four dash forty-four twenty-five Ward Street, also known as Farmhouse Local, just up the street here. So for reference, there's a couple, you can see the, the site from the overhead view on the left, and then I've included a photo of the front of the structure and then the rear where the proposed improvement is going to take place. So the project includes demolition of the existing enclosed area, which you can see back here on this bottom one. And the construction of two new decks at the rear and a small twenty-seven square foot addition to the actual structure that's for, I think, refrigerator equipment. The project requires approval of design review, a parking variance, and a use permit. So as I mentioned, there are two new decks proposed. There is a first floor deck that's going, that would be three hundred and sixty-one square feet. A second story deck that would be four hundred and ninety-one square feet, and then a twenty-seven square foot addition to the rear of the structure. The fence or the decks would be screened on one side from a, a large wall with glass blocks in it to allow light to pass through, and then a railing and a, and a fence. The project does require a parking variance because of the size of the uses. And I should mention that the first floor is a restaurant, the second floor is office space. So the parking is calculated based on the square footage of those uses. The code would require fifteen parking spaces on that site, which would probably remove eighty percent of the building. So the yeah, and so currently, as you can see in this lower photo, there are two parking spaces currently. They're blocked by some seating, trash cans and the staircase that exists at the rear currently. The project proposes one ADA space centrally located in the same area of those two existing parking spaces. Because this is a business with more than ten outdoor seats, it does require a use permit to approve. We haven't found any record of a previous use permit to approve the existing outdoor seating. So this is sort of a legalization of the existing use and approving an expansion for the number of seats. The project, because it is in the Heritage District, actually, let me back up. The building is not historic. It is not in the downtown National Register District. However, it is in the H Heritage District overlay. And that requires review by the Heritage Preservation Board. And that board heard this item at their October twenty-second, October twenty-fourth, excuse me, hearing, and voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval, of approval, excuse me, to the planning commission. And you can just see highlighted in yellow here. That's the, the property with the shading above it. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the commission hold a public hearing, consider public testimony, and approve the project subject to findings, conditions of approval, and a class one sequo exemption. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the owner and applicant are here as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex. Do we have the applicant?
Wait, wait, I did have a question.
Sorry.
I'm just curious, is, is the deck for the offices or will I be able to eat up there? I mean, if, if we.
So my.
I asked the same question earlier.
My understanding is that the deck is for the offices. You could condition the project, I suppose, condition the project that you or at least make the finding that you approve outdoor seating on the second story to, for the, for the restaurant.
For just for Brock, though.
Yes, private dining, yeah.
Okay.
I actually called into staff earlier today to ask that same question because the staircase runs up to the deck from the parking area. So it wasn't clear to me what the upstairs deck was for. And the question I had for staff was, is there any reason why it has to be for the office or has to be for the restaurant? And it sounds like it, that doesn't matter, but maybe the applicant could address, could at least address that, but just to clarify.
Perspective, there's no issue with the seating on the second story. I don't know if there's implications. Oh, maybe ADA access. Yeah, there might be fire and building implications for that. But from my perspective, our perspective, it could be allowable.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
David Monson from Farmhouse Local. I've owned the restaurant for twelve years and a year and a half ago, the previous owner, Leo Arnold, passed away. I was fortunate enough to buy the building last November, actually, this, this particular week, one year ago. During the twelve years that I was at Farmhouse Local, the building was in pretty severe disrepair. I've never had a working air conditioning, and the upstairs has never had a working furnace. So given that, when I bought the building, I knew that I had to immediately take some steps to improve the building and I replaced the roof immediately. I have two offices upstairs that are unusable right now because of water damage. My intention with the second floor deck is to remove all of the offices and to put my residents there. I would like to live there. So that's why it is, it, it daylights out to the driveway and not into the, into the restaurant. There's also problems with ADA access with the health department if I were to seat people upstairs. So the upper deck is not for the restaurant.
So the little guy with the menu and the rendering is just not accurate?
That's a private.
Yeah, well, all right. You just like to play restaurateur when you're at home.
But the idea of a residence, I mean, it sounds great, but are we, are we are we supposed to take that into account? Or are we addressing that in any way? Does, are we not, does no, okay?
Forget I mentioned that.
Okay.
I mean, it's zoned resident, it's zoned residential. Yeah.
It, it's an allowed use.
No concern with it. It just involves a lot of building code issues that the applicant doesn't want to pursue at this moment, or we would be in support of it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Since you mentioned that publicly there, I was like, okay. Do you have anything else you wanted to add? Or is that your extent of the?
I, I think that's it. The, the existing patio has been there for, I think, twenty years or so. And I don't think it's ever been legally used permitted. And I'm applying for the use permit for that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Do we, hang on, I do we have any comments from the public here tonight?
Have you tried the trout salad that's on the menu now? It's unbelievable.
And the stones are incredible.
So please get, please introduce yourself. Right now, I just know he's the husband of somebody who spoke earlier.
I'm Philip Paris. I'm at seventeen Francis, but that, so. But it's, it sounds like it's a parking issue. We there two, twice a week at least on the weekends, we've never had a parking issue. There's parking across the street, there's parking on the streets, and and we'd love to have that back patio expanded. So completely in support.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are there any comments on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you'd like to provide a comment, please raise your hand.
We have a non-Zoom comment.
And there are no hands up on Zoom?
No, but okay.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm Bob Wood. I am, I reside at one fifty Rice Lane, which is the Rice Stable Court development that's right across Rice Lane, and we're neighbors with David. And I think the thing that I wanted to say was that, and I was kind of hoping that, you know, you had a little presentation. So I'll do it. I think I think they've done a marvelous job, Colin and David, in preserving the building, preserving the setting and all of that. It's a very important element of the northern end of Magnolia and of Rice Lane itself. And we think that me and the other residents at Rice Stable Court are very supportive. And so I, we, we just wanted to put that in there is that we thought that they had done a sensitive job, a sensible, sensitive, and you know, are really good neighbors. The parking, I'll just reiterate on the parking. Yeah, automobiles, parking is the bane of our existence. But everything seems, it has been working all along. And so we think it can continue that way, and we would support the variance of twelve parking spaces dedicated. I'd have to just fill in that none of the other business concerns right there have twelve parking spaces dedicated themselves. It's all street parking. It's all the village urban setting, parking, that seems to work quite well. The upper deck is, I think, well done. They've addressed the ADA and the fire regulations effectively, I believe. And the other buildings directly to the south all have decks and steps and access points as well. So it fits in with the character along Rice Lane there. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? No. I, I just had one really quick question. So the wall that I see on the rendering that has the, the glass, so I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. It's, it's, so you've got the back of the restaurant, you've got the one parking space, you've got effectively like a fencing, and then behind the fencing is the patio, and then there's a wall with the, with the glass inserts.
That's correct. Both the, what would that be? The southern wall and the western wall are on the property line?
Yeah.
So they have to be solid. I have glass blocking there to let in light, make it more like a patio.
So that wall that I see in the, the rendering is the wall that's on the bank side. And we, and we're looking all the way through.
That's correct.
Great. That was it. Thank you. Okay. If there's no comments, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Should be fairly short, I hope.
I mean, I have no issues. It's, it's fine. I think it's going to be a nice deck and you're going to have a great time. Wonderful place to eat. I love going there. It's my favorite place in Larkspur. So.
No, I, I, I think it's fine. It's great.
And I'd have to agree. I mean, I think it's a, and I'm, I'm glad you're putting, you're upgrading it. I'm glad you're putting a deck in. And I think you're right. It's downtown. There's no need for additional parking at this site. So most people just walk there. So I think this is pretty, this is pretty straightforward. I think we can just go make a motion, please. They needed to a few, so.
Yeah, what was the motion? The motion is to approve. Let me, how do you formally state it here? I'll approve the motion at twenty-five Ward Street for addition of a deck and a exception for parking, a, a, how do you say, an variance for parking?
No, it's design review for re-addition.
And decedition and approval of the use permit.
If you could just toss in, subject to findings, conditions of approval and the sequo exemption.
Subject to findings, conditions of approval and sequo exemptions.
Can we have a second, please?
I'll second.
Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Wagstaff, Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
And Chair Chalmers.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes three yeses with one recusal and one absence.
Right. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
All right, we're going to swap out commissioners. Does Commissioner Swisher need to stay for the rest of the evening or can he go home?
Well, I mean, I can stay, but I can't. No, I, I'll just stay. What's that?
Just go, just go.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if you want to stay.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm, I'll leave.
In terms of the minutes, do, if, if you want to.
I have to be at, at work early.
Yeah, if you want to approve the minutes that I was not at, do you want to do that?
Oh, yeah. Let's just, let's just quickly do that as a business item.
Yeah, because I, I really want to. I do have comments on the other minutes. I know, I'd love to do. Yeah. That would be the, oh, no, I was this one, October eighth. Can, can we do a point of, can we just do a business item and approve the minutes for, for October eighth?
It's, it says draft.
Well, two members for absent, and then of the three, one's absent today.
Let's just put that off till the next one.
So, so we can't do it then? All right. All right. So we'll just skip minutes for tonight.
All right, go ahead. What about October twenty-second? We have others.
Oh, I, I have some comments. Okay, so we're moving on to our next item, which is twenty-one Chevy Chase. Project number twenty-three forty-five. Could we please have the staff report?
I'm just going to listen for a little bit.
Yes. Good evening again, Planning Commission. The project before you is PLN twenty-three forty-five for twenty-one Chevy Chase. It's also referred to as thirty Owlswood. For a bit of context, the lot here is highlighted in yellow on the left. Chevy Chase runs somewhat parallel to the lot here, and then Owlswood comes up through this area and sort of dead ends into a property, which I think is technically in Corder Madera. This picture on the right that's very small, I apologize, is the, the site in question. And then we've got a rendering of the home here on, on the bottom. So the project proposes to construct a new thirty-one hundred and twenty-six square foot, two-story residence that does include a five hundred square foot junior accessory dwelling unit, and I think it's a five hundred and sixty-six square foot garage. As designed, the project would require approval of design review variance, two variances, floor area ratio exception, and a slope use permit. And I do just, it's noted on the agenda, there was a bit of a delay in getting the story polls up coinciding with There was, um, a bit of a delay in getting the story polls up coinciding with the, the noticing. So tonight is gonna be a study session just to provide initial feedback to the applicant. We're not asking for an official decision to be rendered. Uh, so here's the lower level floor plans. Let me see if I can zoom in for you. This would be the garage here on the right, which does include the two, uh, covered parking spaces. And then on, above it would be the junior accessory dwelling unit. And then the first level of the main home, which is living area and a one, one suite. And that, uh, the living area, I should say, on this level is about a thousand square feet. On the second level, it's a complete second story. So it's another thousand square feet of living space, which includes more, more bedrooms and access to the patio areas that would ring the home. Uh, so I did note in the staff report, there are some desired guidelines, design guidelines that the, uh, the project may not meet entirely. Uh, I mean, to be fair, as you can see on there, there are some that it does meet. Namely, the ones that it, it seems to be in conflict with the staff is stepping the structure with the natural terrain, uh, designing second stories in subordinate, subordinate in scale and avoiding complete second stories. Avoid long flat wall planes along the side of a house. Uh, design terracing with small incremental steps that conform to the natural hillside profile as much as possible. It does appear to comply with the following guidelines, which are designing lower floors to be near to grade, uh, not to exceed the building facade with a typical residential structure on an adjacent, on adjacent lots and locating garages and parking areas as to minimize grading for driveways. One of the things I do wanna note in fairness is if you look at the neighborhood context here, many of those homes are large and they have complete second stories. So this may not fit with what the design guidelines say, but it does seem to fit with the neighborhood context of the surrounding homes. The project requires, the first, the first variance that's required is a setback variance, uh, and it's to reduce the street side yard setback from the required ten feet to zero feet. Uh, and that, to be clear, is just for a staircase, which is gonna be required for emergency access for the fire department. The structure itself meets the setback. I think the thinking and the owner could probably speak to this is that the, the alternative would have been to install a turnaround for a fire truck on Owlswood, which if you've been up there would be very, very hard to do. Um, so this staircase highlighted in yellow here would, uh, go over the property line and connect to the Chevy Chase right of way. And that's something that the fire department has deemed acceptable rather than having the turnaround there. The second variance is to the natural state requirement. Um, so I don't know that this is one that's talked about much with the commission, but there's a rule that says you must keep a certain percentage of your lot natural and open and permeable. Uh, and how we get to that calculation is we take the slope of the lot and we add twenty-five percent to it. And whatever that outcome percentage is, is what the requirement is. So in this case, the slope of the lot is fifty-five percent. So that results in a natural state requirement of eighty percent. Uh, the project provides a natural state calculation of fifty-six percent. So they would require a variance with that regard. Uh, the project will require a slope use permit. There will be approximately six hundred and sixty-nine cubic yards of cut and fill to dis- to construct the project as designed. Uh, they, to have, the applicant has provided the geotechnical report, which was reviewed by the city's consulting geotechnical engineer and found to be adequate. Uh, and the project does also require a floor area ratio exception. I have a very preliminary work in progress floor area study here for you. Um, the, the applicant is seeking a floor area ratio of point zero four oh five. Excel rounds it up to point four one. It would place it as the fourth largest structure, uh, in the, in the neighborhood, or at least in the surrounding three hundred feet. Uh, oops. The applicant could add an ADU of up to eight hundred square feet, which would increase the floor area ratio to point zero, point five zero nine, excuse me. Which would make it the second largest home in the area. Uh, so i- in conclusion, staff recommends that the commission hold a public hearing, consider public testimony and provide feedback to the applicant as to the design. And the applicant will return at a later meeting for a formal decision. I'm available for any questions and I think, uh, the property owner is here as well and his architect may be here.
Thank you very much, Alex. Can we have a, um, can we hear from the applicant?
Actually, I had a quick question. Um, so the address is Chevy Chase Court. So is the, is that the front yard setback?
Weird. The front yard would be off of Owlswood. Because it's the narrowest, the narrowest frontage.
Okay.
Yeah.
You said there was an alternative address of thirty Owlswood.
Yes, I think if you look up, uh, look it up right now, you'd find it under thirty Owlswood, but I think the fire department wants it to be twenty-one Chevy Chase.
Okay. Actually, you know what might be helpful for us to hear? Um, is I, this came before the planning commission twice, right, in the past? Can you just confirm when and what, what happened? Like, cuz it seems like it was, it was withdrawn and denied.
Yes, so the project has come before the planning commission, uh, and the city council twice. The first time, I think in nineteen eighty-three, uh, where they had proposed a seventeen hundred and fifty-three square foot residence above grade. Uh, and would have also, they also needed a variance for the natural state at that time as well. Uh, the commission approved that project, uh, but it was appealed to the city council by neighbors and the owners at the time just decided to withdraw the application prior to going through with the appeal hearing. And then the second time was in the year two thousand where they proposed a twenty-six ninety-four square foot three-story residence with almost a thousand cubic yards of grading. Uh, and again, the planning commission approved the project. However, there was an appeal filed. And in that case, it did go before the council for a hearing and the appeal was upheld and the, the project was denied essentially. Uh, I think in both cases, the concern was the amount of grading and the size of the, of the home.
Any other questions for staff? No, okay, um. Can, can, can we hear from the applicant, please?
It's been quite a night. Thank you for sticking around. Thank you all for staying here. Uh, my name is Frank Edwards. Um, I'm, uh, trying to build a home at, uh, twenty-one Chevy Chase. I'll keep myself, keep it short. I had my family here. I was gonna introduce them. Obviously, they're not here. I have two small kids. Um. I just wanna say it's, it's been a personal dream of mine to build my own home. And when I found this lot, um, in Larkspur and I run to love the community and the town, I thought this is the perfect place to do that. Um. I was gonna go on and say more. I would just say that, you know, the plans are there. I am here to listen to the commission and listen to my neighbors, uh, potential neighbors and, uh, help move this project forward. So I'll keep it nice and sweet for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the applicant? No.
My only question is, you know, if they've, if they've done any outreach to neighbors. But I guess we'll find out from the neighbors.
Are you all neighbors here tonight?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so we'll be hearing from you. Um. Okay, well, we can come back to ask that question. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was a, I was distracting the applicant with a question while you asked yours. Would you repeat it for him?
So, um, it's been a quite a laborious process just to get here. Wasn't even sure I'd make it here. So a little bit before we put notice, I actually sent out some notes and, uh, tried to introduce myself and left my email and, uh, phone number. I did, I can't, I talked to about half the neighbors, I think. I haven't heard from anyone. No one's emailed me except those that I've contacted, but, um, I think now I'm realizing, uh, watching other applicants that there is.
That was.
Having, being more engaged with the committee would have been a smarter choice, but quite frankly, I've had so many setbacks in this project, I didn't even know I'd be here. So for me, it was like, what's the point of, of, uh, talking to them unless I actually knew I could actually do anything. So, uh, that's why I'm here at this point and that's why it's been this way.
Are you currently based in Marin?
I'm in, uh, I live in Presidio in San Francisco.
Oh, in the city, okay. All right, well, let's hear from the neighbors. If you have any comments. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mike Reese. I live at, uh, two-two-three Marina Vista, which is the property above the planned, um, dwelling. And I'm here tonight with no formal objection. I'm, this all happened very fast. I think we heard about, we had heard the land was sold a couple of years ago, but it wasn't until about a week ago that we, um, got confirmation that there was a plan to build. So I'm here with, uh, I guess just to raise a couple of concerns, fears, and really understand the process. Um, I think my wife and, and our, our biggest concern is this is a, uh, uh, it's a fifty-five percent slope. It's a steep slope and we sit above that. And, um, I just wanna know how, before building, we are all comfortable that the building of this new house is not gonna hurt the integrity of that hill, both not only from a drainage standpoint, but just from a, uh, it's physical integrity. Cuz I don't think it would do anybody any good to have our house roll down on the, on the proposed new house. So I don't know. I, um, I, it sounds like there was a geo thermal report done. I'd, I'd love to see that, but I just would love to know what the process is. And I trust that the, the, the diligence of the development and the diligence of this commission will make sure that we're all safe. And I, I think that's my biggest concern. And I, I, I don't know how, I, I, if, if this is the forum for you to kinda educate me on what that looks like.
Um, we, we can have staff address that, but, um, are you in the house? Are you on Owlswood?
No, he's on Marina Vista.
No, I'm on.
No.
Which sits right above.
So Marina Vista, Marina Vista wraps around.
Okay.
And it, uh, it's kind of very confusing when you go up there, but it's above.
Yeah.
Oh, I, oh, you're, you're really above that. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'll be looking down.
Got it. Okay.
Hopefully not rolling down. So that's, that's concern one. And then my only other question was, I do know that there was, um, potential applicants in the past and was just wondering, well, what's different with this one? If, if those didn't work out, why is this one gonna work out? Those are kind of my two initial concerns.
Um, we could address those questions. I mean, um, if you wanna address the, the, the geo report.
Yeah. Yeah. So they, they did have a geotechnical report that said that the work is feasible and wouldn't create any hazards. It will get reviewed again for, but you know, another technical review when, i- if it's approved, when they go to the building permit standpoint and the building department's not going to approve something if they have any report that says there may be an issue. And i- if, if that was the case, you know, they, the engineer might suggest mitigation measures that would have to be incorporated into the design to get past that stage. Uh, and then in terms of what was different, the designs are different. I think, I forget which one it was. I think it was the, the one in two thousand. Um, whereas this one sort of steps with the terrain a little bit. That one was very much, we are just going to cut into the lot and build on top of that, whereas this one uses, does use some cut, but also some fill, um, to kind of balance it out. I don't recall what the design was of the earliest application. I guess I probably shouldn't go into my opinion on the aesthetics of those designs, but, yeah. Different designs, kind of a different approach. Um, and then just, yeah, the, the geotechnical reported. They're not going to be able to build something if there's evidence that there would be an issue. And so far, there's been no, no evidence.
Is, is that report either public record or something that you can share?
Uh, yeah, I didn't include it for the study session, but I can grab your email after and I can send it to you. Yeah.
Okay, appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I should be curious on that note because d- did you, can you get house insurance? Have you looked into that? Like. Are you gonna, have you looked in? Because there's a big issue right now in Marin County on sloped slots of um, insurance companies canceling homeowners' ins- insurance.
Just in general, right? Home insurance, right?
Well, mostly in California, but it's, it's, I mean, it's happening a lot in, in, um, in Marin. I mean, not all over California, but here, um, especially it's a very wooded area where you are and you're new built, so. It's.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
It, it's a, a known problem.
Yeah.
Um, something that's come up after the fact, essentially, of this process, you know, so. It's something that'll just have, you know, I'm trusting that the California insurance.
Well, you'll have to get it off the exchange.
Yeah, I'll have to figure something out. Yes, I'm, but more.
You're coming in with eyes wide open then on the.
Yeah, where the.
Okay, cuz that and, and it's earthquake country, obviously.
I live in California, I'm with life. I think I, I understand the visitor. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, could we please have, is there another comment from anyone in the room? Thank you. You can introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is John McKernan. Um, my, my wife, uh, Fran, we live at twenty-nine Owlswood. Property directly adjacent to this property. We lived in our home for over twenty years. Um, I, I, I have a lot of comments, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll start by saying, I'll, I'll start by saying that the, the notice of this was nonexistent. Uh, we received our notice in the mail, I think, yesterday. Uh, the applicant actually knocked on our, on our door a, a few days ago and talked to her son. And the story polls went up last week and I don't even think that they're finished yet. So, you know, I, I think, you know, if this is gonna be, and, and the fact that we're nine, over nine o'clock at night, there were other neighbors here that wanted to express their opinion here. They have now left. So I can, I can tell you with, with high confidence that there's not a single neighbor here that, that is in favor of this, of this development.
Okay, I will, can I just ma- make it clear that if we're not giving an approval or a denial or anything tonight, then the, the homeowner has not come in today to ask for any approval. They're just seeking feedback. So there will be another opportunity that will be properly noticed for you to come in at and bring all the neighbors. And we can make sure that it's early in the agenda. I mean, we had a very difficult case earlier tonight and you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
The, and, and the other thing for consideration, where your, what's in front of you is over a three thousand square foot home that is code allowed seven hundred square feet. I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I don't understand wh- why that's even remotely even feasible to even consider. The, the, the scale of this structure that's gonna be there is completely out of character of the neighborhood. I disagree with, uh, the senior planners', uh, uh, statement when he, when he said there's other large houses on the earth. There, there isn't. Our, our home is eleven hundred square feet. It's small and it's in comparison with everything else in that, in that, in that neighborhood. So a three hun- uh, over a three thousand square foot home when a seven hundred square foot home is, is acceptable by FAR. So that, that would be something that we could support. We, we don't want, we, we don't want you to, not to build, but build within the code and something that's within character of, of the, of the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? If you could come to the microphone, introduce yourself, please.
Brian McCarty and I live at twenty-nine Owlswood. Just in regards to the insurance issue you just brought up. When we moved to twenty-nine Owlswood twenty years ago, State Farm dropped our insurance while we were in escrow, saying that they had concerns about a fire truck being able to turn around up there. So we had to scramble at the eleventh hour to find an insurance company to cover us. So twenty years later, it hasn't gotten any better. So.
Right.
Just.
I, I can relate, by the way. We've just been dropped, so. I see two other faces in the audience. No, no. Okay, any comments on Zoom?
Uh, if you're on Zoom and you wanna provide a comment, you can raise your hand. Oh, yeah, we do have a couple of hands raised. I think the first is Stacy. Oh, I gotta do it on this computer. She'd be able to unmute and speak now.
Hello, um, my name is Stacy Huang. I'm here on behalf of the architect who is away on emergency family matters. Um, I'm just here to say that, uh, thank you for all of your feedback and time for being here. And we will take everything into consideration. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got one more hand up. And the next one is Jen Reese. You should be able to unmute and then speak.
Yeah, so I'm Mike Reese's wife who spoke first. I'm a neighbor at two-two-three Marina Vista Avenue. And yeah, I'm deeply concerned about the earth shifting underneath our home and what building, uh, such a large home or any home would do. And what building such a large home or any home would do to. Our home and other existing homes on Marina Vista Avenue. And I believe I've got other neighbors who did not stay this late. To who also have this concern. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And there are no other hands raised.
Okay, in that case, we'll bring it back to the commission. Do we want to address specific questions that you have? Or do you want? I mean, that I want to say like, how can we be helpful to you? I mean, we can just give you general comments, but if you have specific questions as well that you want to ask. Please, yeah.
No, I can. I can understand. There's nothing there. So it's change, right? No one likes change particularly, so I understand. And I sympathize with the neighbors, but the lot was there. And they had the option to buy it, and no one did. And I bought it. And I'm trying to do something with it. So. So that's a little bit of my perspective. I hear them. I the three thousand square foot, I. I feel like it's not livable square footage. It's less than that. And it's not, you know, that's including ADU, which. Technically shouldn't be thought of as part of that calculation or considered as far as. I don't know. I'm not quite. I'm struggling to articulate that, but.
It, yeah, it counts now, but if it were a existing home and it was constructed, it would be they would be under the. The provision of the code to give them an air floor area bonus.
And we understand the rules. I mean, you don't need to redo your presentation. So just if you had specific questions, would you like us to address? We were trying to be helpful.
Yeah, I know. I think. I can try my best to listen to the community and adjust the design. Seven hundred feet sounds rather drastic to get it down there. I mean, that's just I have two kids. And I have a partner, and that would, you know, I'd be making shack and.
And we understand it's a slope lot. Yeah.
It's complicated. So it's it's been a difficult journey here, and I understand the perspective. So, yeah, any any feedback would be helpful where I can find some compromise between the two parties. I'm certainly willing to listen. I just wanted to address the fire situation and just explain it to you all. I thoroughly talked to the fire marshal before I bought it. Because I'd heard these issues before, and they basically instructed me like, listen. You have to have the address on twenty one Chevy Chase. Otherwise, it just doesn't work. Otherwise, I'm just building a turnaround. So that is why I have to build and will make my address on Chevy Chase, and that's why I need to have stairs, just to clarify that.
Understood. Thank you. But.
Were you planning on entering the property from Al's wood or Chevy Chase?
It's Al's, right? The garage is on Al's wood.
Would you have access on Chevy Chase up to the property? Oh, like.
Yeah, the stairs would be.
Staircase up there. Yeah, yes.
But you're recused to.
I'm refused. I'm not. I'm not. I'm just I'm a neighbor. Yes, well, I'm happy to answer your questions.
So you can't actually participate in this.
It's a neighbor question.
Yeah, you should.
For the record, the commissioner lives in the neighborhood, so is technically recused. I cannot provide opinions, but can ask questions as a general member and as a as a community member as a neighbor. Yeah.
I'm happy to talk to you at some point if you want to come by my house, and I'm happy to give you some advice about building in that area.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah.
Okay, so thank you. And if there's any questions, we can, I guess, provide some feedback.
I have one question. I wasn't sure. Did you say the deck is not counted in lot coverage at this moment?
I don't think. I think the deck is counted.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, just because I thought it was an unusual situation that if there's a situation where someone builds up a yard with a retaining wall. And fills it with soil, that it seems like that should be counted towards lot coverage. And an alter maybe even alteration of natural state. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone was in agreement with that, because it does seem like equivalent to a deck. But it just has dirt instead of soil. But this could. This could happen a lot on hillside lots where people. Build retaining walls and then level out their area. And I'm not sure how to treat that under our code.
So.
Will depend on you.
Yeah, I mean, my my, to me, it looks like a deck, seems like a deck, because building something that elevates people. So could have impact. So my inclination would be to to count it as like as if it's a deck.
So it would be coverage.
Coverage, right.
Yeah.
And natural and in well, I mean, I guess it's pervious. If it's pervious, it's pervious, but.
Well.
It's not really natural state.
Big retaining walls on, I mean, big retaining walls.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Wagstaff, would you like to start because being the architect on the.
Well, it is one of the steeper lots I've motored around on. I almost went and got my climbing gear, but. I think the house has to be quite a bit smaller than what you're proposing. It's just it's just a very tight site and. You know, it's it is a lot, so you should be able to build something. It'd be nice to build a house big enough to have a couple of kids in. But there are some realities relative to sites like that, that is probably why it's sat there for all this time. So right now, just looking at what you you started with, it's I think it's way too big. So. That's about all all the advice I can I can give you. It's and it's. I don't know if anybody's been by the house in Corner Madera that they're digging a giant hole in the side of the hill, but. We're seeing some of that in other communities, because there are fewer and fewer lots available, but. That's still we're still not going to be able when you have a point oh, five FAR. It's hard to support a point three or four. So that's just my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. You have no feedback, nothing? Okay, all right. Well, I want to start by saying thank you so much for coming in and actually asking for feedback. We don't get this very often, so normally they just come in with the proposal and say, please approve it. So. I guess you you had the opportunity to not come to this meeting, is my understanding, because this we didn't notice it. So the fact that you're here and neighbors are here. Hopefully, this was this a beginning of a dialogue. So no, what are you about to say?
I was just going to say the project was noticed. It was the story polls.
Polls that went up, right? So that's on you. Okay, that was on you. So. It sounds like you've started the outreach, so I would say continue that and. Meet with your neighbors. A lot of them have been in the neighborhood. This is a very community oriented city town. So it's important to to communicate. I would also say communicate and listen to staff. They're going to be your most valuable asset here. So. That's probably the best advice I can give you. They've been doing it a long time, and they will give you some very good feedback. And as a commission, we rely heavily on on staff. And we talk to them a lot about different projects before we come in. So that's probably the second thing I would say. I keep thinking you want to say something to me.
I have questions just for clarity, for feedback, but I can I can.
Okay. It's also a very ambitious project. I mean, when I went there, I was. I mean, it's a very steep lot. So I you obviously are going in with eyes wide open about what you're planning to do here. So. Other than that, why let's listen to your questions.
I just wanted to get the commission's. Reaction or feedback to, I guess, some of the design guidelines that were called out that it potentially does not comply with. So I don't know if the commission has strong feelings about. The complete second story that's proposed. I understand the feedback to shrink. I don't know if you want. It to shrink the second story to shrink. In addition to not be a complete second story, or if you have any issues with. The retaining walls and if you would want them to be terraced in a new design, or if you're fine with the idea of creating yard space that way.
Well, reading between the lines, I was trying to say that given that you've given this feedback to the applicant. I hope the applicant will work with the staff and following those design guidelines, because the fact that they've been raised by staff. Means that we will look into it more. Doesn't mean we always agree with staff, but. I would work with staff on the on the on the issues that were raised. And I think they're all very. Pertinent comments.
And I think terrorizing is a good idea. And also, you obviously haven't maybe gotten into planting and all the rest of that. But there's a lot of other things that mitigate the sort of the what's happening on a steep hillside.
The only one I sort of was more relaxed about was maybe the retaining wall, because you are on such a steep slot, you're sort of stuck with having to put in. Retaining walls, right? I mean, as an architect, so I'm not sure how you're going to get around that one. So. Again, work with staff.
And and just to be clear, from my point of view, the house is too big.
What was the F A R on that?
Were you asking for the floor area?
No, I found it. Yeah, thanks. And it sounds like you don't have an option with the exterior staircase. You're going to have to build that. And so they're going to have to ask for that variance, right? There is no. Is there an alternative to that?
He, yeah, I don't believe there's really. The only alternative would be a residential turnaround. They would. Take up quite a lot of the lot.
Okay, so that varies.
Is there a way that the staircase can be utilized by other people on the hill? Because Al's wood is a really tight street. And if there were a fire, I'd want, you know, I guess you could just roll down the hill, but it would be nice to have a better way to get down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I we can. We can branch the question with the fire department.
Yeah, whether the neighborhood, you know, there's another, maybe it doesn't have to be going up to that house, but. There needs to be a way down since you can't turn a fire truck around.
Sure, yeah.
I think we've closed public hearing. Sorry. Yeah. Yes, right. Yes. I think if you do reduce the size of the house, it would help with the. Natural state variance that you're asking for, and also the slope use permit and amount that you're trying to cut. So I think that would make it more palatable to the commission. And that's it. That's all I have to add, I think.
I just wanted to say thank you.
You're you're welcome.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
For all your time.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
And I will take you up on your.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that closes the public portion of the hearing tonight, right? We have no motion to make for that.
You've already done the minutes?
Yeah.
Yes, we're not going to approve any minutes tonight. Yeah, well, I think we're so I think we just do we have any planning commissioners reports? No. And then do we have our next meeting is? Do we know anything about that meeting?
No, I think we have.
Oh, I think I think, yeah. I think fifty six Diane and one Redwood may be coming back for a study session. I'm kind of.
Do you need me for that one?
I'm on call. I'm on call that day. But I mean.
And I don't think I can be here.
It's possible I might be here. It's just I'm on call.
And I'm not around. What?
Yeah, I can't be around for the Diane Lane one. That's. Two houses from mine, isn't it?
Can we do December third? Or is it already noticed? Can you do? Can you? Can we all do December third?
December third, I'm going to be in Cuba.
Wow. Hopefully, you come back out. Can you do the third? Well, can you do the third of December?
Or I know.
Okay. Okay, sorry to make you do this, but then you'll get four out of. Well. You're not going to be available.
We keep all the minutes there or just?
Yes, yeah, why don't you keep one?
Okay.
Or don't keep them and then if Natasha wanted to suddenly change it.
So here was my comment is mostly was for the both for the library and for the housing element. I felt there were a lot of comments that were not captured in the minutes, mostly. Yes, and I wondered if it's because you couldn't hear us in the recording.
But I could try. I could listen and see. I might just think it was so long that I start taking.
Each fell asleep, yeah. Sorry, it was especially at the beginning. I. And I and I wouldn't worry. I would say more check on the beginning. Especially for both meetings, I made a point of asking a lot of questions that I felt the community was asking. And. I mean, it was. I mean, a lot of community members did not come in the end. I mean, did not come to the podium, because I think the questions were raised and addressed. Right at the beginning, like, for example, like, we asked a lot about water water supply. But like, I didn't see that anywhere in the minute. So I just that was going to be really my feedback, and I I was maybe going to give you more specific. But if you can, that would be great. Thank you. And that's it. I think we can have a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
A second. Thank you. We can all. Yes.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
We're adjourned. All right.
You're good.
Yeah. I think I heard it saying. It's it.